How about you?
Jeanette?
That's right.
Jeanette?
The opposite way.
Is Jeanette there?
Nope, I don't know where she is.
Just went back in the office, John, I think.
Hello, man.
Hello. How about stuff?
Good.
Yeah.
Are you sure? Good. Hey, John.
Chair will call the April 6, 2021, meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Here.
Alderman Proctor?
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Alderman McMiniman?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. This time I'd call upon Chief Kenny Winslow for a update report.
Good evening. Tonight I'd like to do a quick update on our 2020 crime stats. We'll start tonight by giving a brief overview and then an update year-to-date for 2021 as well as we talk tonight. The first slide you see here is a beat map of the city. The city is divided into eight different beats. There's 77.1 square miles that the officers cover. The size of the beat is determined by calls for service and types of calls for service. That's why you'll see geographically they may not necessarily look like they coincide with each other. The next slide you see will be our calls for service, the early comparison. In 2020, we answered 110,412 calls for service. Our five-year average is 123,048 calls for service. We contribute this decrease to the pandemic. Obviously, we started talking to our officers early on when the pandemic broke out about policing, and we referred a lot of calls to the desk, as well as we had less calls from the citizens at that point in time. We also were doing less traffic stops, obviously trying to keep the public safe and our officers safe.
Excuse me, Chief, do you have a handout for this? Because we can't see that.
Yeah, I can definitely get that. Ah, I do not have a handout for everybody. Can we email it to them by chance?
You emailed some. Let me see if I can pull mine.
All right, just see if we get a copy of it. Could you do that?
I'll make sure we get a copy when we're done here.
Just, we'll listen to your talk, but I can't see it.
Fine, it's too small.
Yeah, the TV on this side doesn't work at the moment.
Okay. With that said, our reports written were slightly down, as well as our crash reports. Everything across the board was kind of down. Citations issued, parking citations issued, everything was down across the board. Ordinance violations were slightly down. Our FOIA requests were slightly down as we go through. This is a breakdown of the calls for service by date of the week. You'll see that Friday is our highest day of the week, followed by Wednesday as our second highest day of the week. It's freezing. It's thinking about working. There we go. This slide here is our calls for service by beat. As you see, that Beat 100 had the most calls for service with 15.3%, followed by Beat 500 with 15%. You also see on the very far end, 3,727 calls in unincorporated Springfield or assist other agencies, such as the Donlins, helping those departments out. The pie chart here breaks down our calls for service by hourly and four-hour blocks, which you'll see here is from noon to midnight, accounted for 60% of our calls. This slide here shows down the monthly breakdown for calls for service. Kind of surprised to us when we went through this was that November was our high calls for service. Now, we always see an increase in November due to the shopping times and stuff, but this year with the pandemic, I was kind of surprised to see that increase there. Normally, that wouldn't be surprising, but this year with the pandemic, I thought it was a little higher than what I was expecting personally. The next slide is our Part 1 index crimes. You'll see in 2020, our Part 1 index crimes were actually down 7%. These are the stats that we report to the feds. Our five-year average is 6,475. Last year, we had 5,582. This is a breakdown of these actual Part 1 index crimes that are reported to the feds, starting with aggravated assaults and aggravated batteries. You'll see that those were slightly below our five-year average. Our five-year average is 778. We had 771. Our arson was 39 compared to 43, and up from 2040 year before, so it was a pretty good increase there. We saw nice reduction in burglaries. Some of that is because people were staying home more. Our homicide rates went from nine to 11. Our five-year average is nine. Motor vehicle theft stayed about flat. Our robberies were down slightly. Our sexual assaults were down slightly, and our thefts were down pretty significantly. Overall, it's a mixed bag. Crimes against person as a whole because of our aggravated assaults and the rise we saw there was up 21%. Our crimes against property was down 12%, but overall, we were down 7%. The next slide shows our criminal homicides. As you can see here, the first chart basically shows that there were 11 homicides total and that nine of them occurred by gunshot. We always track that because a lot of times we're trying to get guns off the street and how they contribute to that. The other part of the chart here that you'll see is a table to the left. It shows the homicide clearance rate in the U.S. compared to SPD. And as you'll see, they were significantly higher than the national average every year. In 2020, we cleared 81.8% of all homicides. Obviously, we want that to be 100%. The national average at the time of us putting this out has not been determined. 2019, we cleared 66.7% compared to the national average of 61.4. In 18, we cleared 77.8% compared to 62.3. In 17, we cleared 88.9% compared to 61.6. In 16, 71.4% compared to 59.4. And in 15, 90% compared to 61% nationally. So our guys and girls are out there doing what they can. We can make this rate higher with community support and community help and people saying what they know and providing information. Confirmed shots fired. You'll see here, this is the bar truck going up. Last year, we had 377 confirmed shots fired. We knew when we implemented shots fired, we were going to see a large increase. The people stayed here and they told you that we were probably getting 10% to 15% of reported shots fired. We thought that would be extremely low. We thought we'd be closer to 40% to 50% reportings. It appears that they are accurate in their estimations. Today, we still get numerous shot spottlers with no calls from the community. Shot Spotter is a great tool for us, but it doesn't tell us what kind of vehicle it was. It doesn't tell us what the suspect looked like. It does direct us to the location. It does get us there quicker sometimes to catch people in the act. It also helps us get there in time to hopefully save people's lives and render aid. But again, it can't provide that vital information. It's not a replacement for people calling us. The line across the bottom, what you'll see there, is that we had 54 people shot last year. Our five-year average is 46 people, so there's a pretty good increase there. Not as high as other cities have seen, but obviously higher than what we've all seen last year due to the pandemic and other reasons that contributed to this. And I'm sure experts that are much smarter than me will be studying the effects of the pandemic on crime for the next 20 years, trying to understand why the rises that communities across the country saw and how come someone were so steep. When you break down the confirmed shots fired and criminal shots fired where people were shot, this is the pie chart of the reasoning. 23% were gang. 9% were feud. 4% were robbery. 2% were rolling disturbances, and 12% were unknown, and one was a result of an order of protection. It's that 12% unknown is what we're trying to address. Why did these occur? Last year, we recovered 269 firearms. Our five-year average is 242 firearms recovered. We made 156 adult arrests for firearm violation and 17 juvenile arrests last year for firearms violation, for a total of 173 arrests. Motor vehicle accidents? We had 3,441. Our 80% of them were property damage. 10%, I'm sorry, 3% were unknown, and 17% were personal injury accidents, for a total of 4,282 total accidents. Our high accident intersections are listed here to the right on the table. Number one was Sagman Avenue and North Dirksen Parkway with 57. Veterans Parkway and Wabash Avenue with 50. Veterans Parkway and Lindbergh, 22. Fifth and Carpenter, 16. MacArthur and Lawrence, 13. Ninth and Madison, 15. Jefferson and Walnut, 14. Fifth and Lawrence, 14. 11th and South Grand, 14. Veterans and Ojack, 14. Dirksen Parkway and South Grand Avenue, 14. And Chatham and Wabash, 14. So last year with the pandemic, obviously, we were tasked with doing COVID compliance checks. The department completed 2,773 COVID convalescence checks. We generated 24 reports off of those checks, eight verbal warnings, and four ordinance violations were issued. Going into 2021 year-to-date shooting statistics, this is as of today. We've had 77 confirmed shots fired called from January till today. 24 people shot, three have died from those gunshot wounds. 36 firearms-related arrests, and 66 firearms recovered so far year-to-date, as of today. What are we trying to do about this? Obviously, the men and women of Springfield Police Department are working extremely hard. We re-assigned resources within the police department to address this violence. We recently started a task force. Everybody knows our manpower issues right now. As we sit here today, I'm at 220 officers. Those numbers are going to reduce here in the next couple of weeks by some more people leaving the department, some retiring, some just choosing to get out of law enforcement. We look at data to try to decide how to deploy our resources. We use that data to coordinate saturation patrols, proactive details. Additionally, we are coordinating our investigations with the U.S. Attorney's Office and State's Attorney's Office to see where we can get the harsher penalty and the better prosecution as far as, I shouldn't say better prosecution, but the better sentence, to try to remove these violent offenders from our streets. With that said, you know, one thing that's frustrating for all of us, I think everybody saw on the news today, or last night, about the person who shot rounds off of the mall getting probation. I've had a conversation with the SA about that. I know that he asked for a prison sentence, but we didn't get one. That's frustrating for our men and women. It's frustrating for our community. When we have these type of violent acts that we need to look and figure out something that I believe, in my opinion, a little harsher. I'm not a person who believes lock people up and throw away the key, but I also believe that people have to be held accountable for their actions when they put the public in danger. We're in the early stages of re-implementing our focused deterrence program. We've told you in the past that we suspended that due to the pandemic. We're trying to figure out how we can do that safely right now, where we can't do the call-ins, but maybe looking at another alternative method, such as custom notifications, to try to re-implement that, so we can try to reach some of these younger kids and get them the help they need. We're also looking to enhance our community partnerships out there. We know that there are people that have power of influence over some of the people that are involved in these games and the people that are involved in this violence, and we're asking them to step forward, use that influence, be that person who can try to make a difference, get people to resolve their conflicts without using violence. We're also trying to reignite our campaign on gun safety and security. You know, we know that these kids are getting guns, and we know they're getting guns from multiple sources. Some are through straw purchases. Some of them are through car burglaries. Some are through residential burglaries. We also know that there's a black market for guns. We also know there's what we call dumpster guns, where guns can be found in certain neighborhoods and are hidden. Trying to figure out where they're getting the guns, where they're getting the ammo. We have an ATF agent who is embedded in our department that is helping us trace every gun that comes back. We're running every casing through our NIBI machine to connect these crimes together. We're looking at technology. The mayor has authorized us to look at additional technology out there, such as potentially license plate readers and additional crime cameras. To go along with that, we're asking the public, you know, always hear, what can we do? What can we do? Get involved. Get involved. You know those people who are at risk. If you can be a mentor for one day, one hour a day, one hour a week, three hours a week, give back whatever you can. We've also worked with Crime Stop to increase the rewards for people who are carrying weapons, people who are involved in these shootings. They've stepped forward and offered up to $5,000 for anybody who provides information on a homicide. They've offered $2,500 for anybody who provides information that results in the arrest for a shooting. So they're stepping forward with that, you know? The other thing I always ask people in the public to do, speak to your legislators right now. Talk to them about gun violence and talk to them about legislation that's pending, current, and passed, which makes some of these offenses probationable. You know, there's nothing more frustrating for law enforcement to vote forth an effort, to bring someone to trial, to get a prosecution and end up with a probationable sentence, you know, when it comes to gun violence. My personal opinion is that if you're caught illegally carrying a weapon, you're one argument, one text message, one social media message away from pulling the trigger and trying to end somebody's life. And if you shoot at somebody, my personal opinion, it shouldn't be probationable, and I would believe that most of the people in our community think the same. So again, those are the things that we are trying to do right now, and I'll open up for questions from you guys.
Any questions or comments? Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for this. I appreciate it. So when you're talking about violence deterrence, are you also, since we have a grant writer now for the city, have you been looking at some of the grant opportunities that are coming available for different programs?
We try to track most of those as they come through. There is some stuff out there dealing with mental illness and co-responder programs right now. That seems to be the hot topic versus gun violence, but I think that there'll be some stuff that comes through, and we constantly monitor them and try to see what they offer. That's how our focused deterrence program actually got up and going, was through a grant.
Right.
And then we've been trying to keep it going with, you know, city funds.
Okay, because I think I saw something, so I'll reach out to you later, but I think I saw one, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alderman Redpath?
Chief, what's the variables that associate these high accident intersections? Sangamon and Dirksen's always been a problem. Is it people running the lights? What do you think it is?
We can actually pull up the reasoning for the accident. I don't have that information for you, but I know that that's 90% of the time at that intersection, it's failure to obey the traffic control device.
Is there anything we can do with traffic, with our traffic engineers to change that or help that in some way?
I believe they're already working on a revamp for that intersection. I'll let Nate kind of take that.
That was Dirksen and Sangamon. Yeah, those are both IDOT intersections, but we are working in conjunction with IDOT to redesign that. They do have a consultant onboard to add dual left turns, which will help the capacity of the intersection, as well as some other signal improvements.
Is there a correlation then, based on what you guys or your research is showing, that that will decrease the accidents at those intersections?
Yeah, that should definitely help. A lot of it is driver frustration, so people will run red lights because they don't want to wait. So with having better timing throughout the day, as well as having dual left turns, provides additional capacity and leads to less driver frustration.
But all the intersections aren't the same way. There's different variables for each one, right?
That's correct. There are, and you have to adjust the timing accordingly. That's just a heavy, there's a lot of traffic that runs through that. There's only one designated left turn lane per leg at this time. So by adding those additional improvements, as well as doing some modifications to Stockyard Road, Marketplace Drive, will also help alleviate some of the congestion, too.
Okay, thank you.
Your will. And that's the number one accident intersection, I think, in all District 6, right up.
Alderman Gregory, then Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I'm happy to hear definitely that we are working on the source of where these, you know, I struggle with the young people because I know they're younger, but they're, you know, when we say kids, a lot of times people automatically think are 13s, 14s. We do have a little of that, but I think our young adults is really, you know, the core focus. You know, I know your focused deterrence program will get back going and help with that. But I truly, truly believe that trying to find the source of where these guns are coming into our community from will really help us, because, you know, they're just getting some big guns a little too easy, so, you know, and that's what's really, really frightening. So I appreciate the hard work.
No, and I agree 100%. I should probably clarify, when I talk about, sometimes I use the word kids. When I talk about kids, I'm talking that age range, basically, 14 to about 26, that's what I refer to. So there are some young adults, I should say, that are definitely involved this weekend. We arrested a 15 and a 16-year-old, as well as an 18-year-old that was involved in this type of violence. So again, it's one of those things that it is the younger kids as well as the young adults.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. Couple points. Number one, we have a serious problem. I hear from every neighborhood about in this town, people not, they're running stoplights and stop signs. They don't, they don't care about them. And we need to, we need to really target that. I know you don't have the manpower, but we got to start doing something. I don't know, and I know we can't have red light cams or whatever. It'd be nice to be able to put up cameras temporarily at certain places just to get some of these people, because it'd make them stop. But I get calls in the neighborhoods themselves, and most of the time, it's people in the neighborhoods that aren't stopping. So I don't know what we can do about that. It's a serious problem. I think every, every red light you go to, when it turns green, you better wait about two or three seconds, because you've got to make sure that somebody's not flying through there. And that's a shame, because that's how people get killed. The other thing is, on some of this activity that's going on, if it's, if it's gang-related or whatever, is it, can we start using, can we look at the RICO Acts and things like that, that, because it's organized crime. They're organized going at each other.
Yeah, there's certain crimes here that has to be used, but if you look at Hobbs Act, the RICO Act, the BP roundup we did back in December was a result of that, when we took 20 gang members off the street. We'll continue to work on those things. We are working with our federal law enforcement partners not to get into details about those things that you're asking about. We are looking at things to try to address some of these offenders, but those are long-term investigations that take a while. That's why we put the task force together to try to address that. And we took members of, from out our department for this task force. So a lot of things like, we'll get to traffic eventually, but I took some traffic officers, you know? I took a traffic officer out to put him on this task force, because I got to get bodies somewhere to put on there, you know? I took a member of our U.S. Marshals Task Force and reassigned him. We are looking at things that we can do and trying to be creative, so we can keep an effective number of officers on the streets to answer calls for service and provide the daily services that we need to do. There's a lot of things that we're going to do, they're going to be delayed, you know? My property crime detectives are now carrying non-fatal shootings, and they're coming in on a shooting call. So a burglar may wait. It may wait a couple of weeks before it's ever assigned for even follow-up. Those are things we're trying to do as we prioritize the gun violence in our community to try to address those. And we will get to those others, it just is going to be a little time, a little delay.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I think this is an opportune time for you to talk a little bit about, because it does impact manpower in the department, your new initiative as far as reporting crimes online and what types of crimes those are and why that's important for the community to know about.
It helps free the officers up instead of having to send an officer to the house. A lot of times what we're trying to do is refer a lot of those calls to the desk anyway, but, you know, we are customer service-oriented. If somebody wants to speak to an officer, they pay taxes and we'll send an officer to them, even now. But we are referring people to those minor thefts where there's no suspect, those, somebody who may rummage through an unlocked car and nothing's really gone, but, you know, they rummage through my car, we want to know about that, those type of reports, maybe some vandalism or graffiti that no one really knows about. We're working where you can upload a picture to the system or a quick short video, so we got the evidence of it and we don't have to send anybody out, you know? But those minor crimes like phone harassment, and I don't mean to say minor, but those less serious crimes, because they're serious to the people that they're occurring to, but not try to downplay that. But some of those things that maybe doesn't need an immediate response from an officer, so we're trying to do that to free up manpower, free up time, keep the officers out there to handle more serious crimes.
Appreciate those efforts.
Yeah.
Alderman Redpath?
Chief, have you been working with the state's attorney and the judicial, the judges about sentencing and charging? How is that going?
Well, the state's attorney and the U.S. attorney, it's going good. Obviously, I think you saw some higher bonds on some of these people that are involved in our shootings here recently, and that was a conversation that we had with the state's attorney and the U.S. attorneys about trying to keep our streets safe. When it comes to the judiciary, obviously, they're independent of us, and, you know, we have not had that conversation with the judiciary. We've asked in the past during the focused deterrence stuff, and we always go through the state's attorney for those conversations, and I know that he had some conversations, but there's got to be that independence from law enforcement, because they are the judge out there, so they, you know, they don't want to be seen as being in cahoots with law enforcement. So obviously, they have to make tough decisions, and as I tell people all the time, you know, I don't always agree with what comes out of the judges, but the judge has to take the evidence at hand, he has to take, or she has to take, the facts of the case, and they make a decision based on the sentencing guidelines. And it's their decision, and, you know, it is what it is. We have to just move on.
So are they being handcuffed by the legislature on the way the new laws are being written?
I don't know that for sure, but I know that there has been changes in the laws. Take the new House bill, there's some changes in the new House bill that goes into effect. And it's not for some time. I don't know the exact implementation date, but basically, a judge doesn't have to follow mandated guidelines anymore. There's some room to use some discretion there. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but obviously, when we're battling an increase in the uptick in gun violence in our community, we want to see people held accountable for that violence. And like I said earlier, you know, not to harp on the mall incident, but when we saw probation out of that in the middle of this, it was a little disheartening for us.
Thanks, Chief.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. Chief, I was wondering, have you seen that the camera registration program has had an impact? Is that helping your officers?
It is. We still just have a small amount of people. I'm sure there's a lot more cameras out there than what we have registered. The one thing we try to get over that hurdle, people think that if you, they hear camera registration, they think we can access their cameras. We can. Alls it does is map the locations of these cameras on a map. So if we have an incident in the area, we go to the map, it's got icons. We click on the icon, it tells us the address of where the camera's at and who owns it, and we call them and ask them to review their cameras during a certain time period. We tell them what we're looking for, and then if they have something, they call us back. That's what we ask, you know? Sometimes they call us out and just say, hey, you want to come look at yourself? Or, hey, I'll send it to you. You guys can search it, you know, whatever makes them comfortable. We just try to work through them and try to be as cooperative as possible and not be invasive into their privacy.
Right, because I know I have a constituent who has, I think, emailed you guys a couple of videos that...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
I have a constituent who unfortunately has caught a fair amount of activity on his cameras, so I was just wondering if that's, if that's...
It's very valuable to us. We still go door-to-door after a major incident, knowing that people have it registered. We check the map, but we also go door-to-door looking to see if we see anything visible, if we can see a ring doorbell, if we can see security cameras. It has helped us in tons of investigations to try to resolve issues. It gives us sometimes a lead to look into, points us in the right direction, but they're very, very valuable.
Well, maybe that's something, as councilmembers, we can encourage people to...
I would ask when you're doing, I know we're not doing a lot of neighborhood association meetings right now because of COVID, but I mean, once we start getting back to those things, just a constant reminder to people, people are always adding, technology becomes cheaper. We ask them to please consider that.
Good.
And Chief, how do they sign up for that?
They can just go to our website, click on the link, and it's about five questions, and you're done.
That SPD...
Yeah, yep. Just go SpringfieldIL.us/SPD, or just Google SPD, Springfield Police Department.
Great. Any other questions or comments?[1638.01] Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chair, I entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March 16, 2021 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Come on, Mayor.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, I entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
Come on, Mayor.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading and consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, I entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Alderman McMinim.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Please record me as a no for 2021-087. It's an ordinance which continues a recreational demand study for Lake Two.
It's noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. The clerk... Or I think we can... Can we pass the vote?
Voting machine.
If you'd... Yep. Voting is now open, so please cast your vote.
Mr. Clerk, it's not coming up on our screens.
It's not coming up on the individual council member's screen?
Got to do a roll call.
If you go ahead and...
We can do a roll call.
Yep, go ahead and do the roll call, please.
All right, Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Plugensi.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor. Alderman McMinim.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nayers with the exception.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
Can you tell me what it would take for a city our size with the professionals we have working for us? What it would take to fix our computer system, our communication system, our voting system? I mean, we've been doing this for months. This is ridiculous. Could you please ask somebody to figure out how to fix this stuff? It's embarrassing.
Yeah, I don't know if the integration with each council member's computer, I'm not sure on that, but we'll check it out.
It's got... There's got to be an answer, Mayor.
Yeah, meanwhile, my computer just came on, so it might have been... Maybe we can test each computer ahead of time, each screen ahead of time.
We need to do that, actually.
Thank you.
Who's computer's not working properly as far as showing it on your screen? Because mine's up.
Only yours, Alderman.
Yeah, meanwhile, it came on.
You know, the whole system needs an overhaul. It's... This is ridiculous. We should be watching our presentations that we're getting here on our screens. We should be voting on our screens.
Sure.
We should be doing all this stuff. The technology's out there and we look silly. I mean, come on, we're a professional organization. We need to fix this.
Well, Mayor?
Yep. Alderman Hanauer.
And along that lines, you know, we go through trees of paper. And there's no reason why we can't get something to where we get things that we can write notes on an iPad or something instead of getting mounds of paper, you know, each week. I can't imagine what goes through your office, but I know in Tim's, in our office, there's tons of it. And I think we need to really look at something, maybe a system that we could use. And I know they're out there. I know they're out there. And that way, we have electronic copies of everything. We can write notes on them. We don't even need a paper copy of the minutes or anything.
Yeah, we'll check with ISD and see what they'd be able to come up with to hopefully resolve it once and for all.
But thank you.
Any other discussion? So the... On the consent agenda that passed, nine voting yes, none voting no, and none voting present. Then there's exceptions on specific agenda items which the clerk recorded for Alderman McMinim and Alderman Plugensi.
Yep.
Is there any action on the ordinances that remain tabled during committee?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, if I could, do an omnibus motion to take items 2021-092 through 102, which I believe are all the annexation ordinances. I'd like to make a motion to untable those motions, those ordinances.
It's been motion to take 2021-092 through 2021-102 out of committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is agenda item number 2018-110, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 38 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to decrease the minimum contracts amounts for which city council approval is required. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2018-110 on final passage.
As a point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe our rules are very clear-cut that ordinances, after six months, they come off the agenda. And our rules are very clear, this shall come off the agenda. So I think the proper way to handle this is to reintroduce this ordinance. This ordinance was introduced three years ago. And it, you know, by inadvertent mistake, they weren't... We got a bunch of them. We need to clean all these up that have been on there for quite some period of time. But they need to come off. And then the proper way to do this is to reintroduce them, let them go through the committee of the whole like they should with a full discussion.
Mayor?
Alderman Hanauer.
Well, since I've been on this, you know, Joe, it's amazing. If it benefits you...
Hey, that's a personal comment.
If it benefits... I got the floor, Joe.
I asked for point of order.
Benefits one Alderman on here.
Go ahead, Alderman.
He allows it. He keeps it on, but if it doesn't benefit him, he wants it off. Last week, we talked about withdrawal. He said he fought hard. You can't withdraw if it's not your ordinance, if you're not the sponsor. I'm the sponsor. I don't want to withdraw. We... Every... Ever since I've been on here, when it comes up, when we ask if it comes up, which it hasn't very often, I guess we got to do better housekeeping, the sponsor says, I want to keep it on. Now, am I wrong with that? Chuck, anybody?
Well, if you're asking the question, you are wrong about it because we are a body of rules. And you just asked a question, so I'll answer the question. Rule 6.8 is very clear, Alderman Hanauer, that ordinances come off the agenda after six months of no action.
Well, let's vote on it because if you don't have the votes, you can just shut up.
I'm trying to give you an answer because you asked the question. We're a body of rules. Now, let's follow the rules. That's just as simple as that. It has nothing to do with personal preference.
Yes, it is because it doesn't benefit you, Joe. Because it doesn't benefit you.
And I...
Alderman...
The way you're approaching this, because is the rule there or not, Alderman Hanauer?
I don't know, but I know that... I know how we proceeded.
I guess I'd ask Corporation Counsel if you'd interpret the rules for us, please.
The normal process refers to the 180 days that it would remain active, but a majority of the committee can extend it. My concern is it's remained on the agenda all this time with no action. So I think that I would not interpret it to automatically cause it to be gone since it has been there. However, going forward, I think the committee asked the clerk and maybe the clerk and I to go through to basically indicate on each of the items, those that are past 180 days. So there could be proper action. But the rule is clear about the 180 days. However, it does provide for an extension and no action was taken to remove it. So it is on the agenda going forward. I think the clerk and I'll try to be of some help with that to designate those that should be removed absent the majority, you know, saying otherwise.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I just make a brief comment?
I actually had been recognized.
Alderman Conley, then Alderman McMinim, then Alderman Hanauer.
So Corporation Counsel, would this be... This sort of a cleanup would be something we would do at committee of the whole? Is that correct?
What we would ordinarily do is probably refer that... This hasn't really happened.
It hasn't happened once since I've been on council and we're not working two years.
So what I was going to recommend is that this is referring to, you know, committee review, this particular rule, 6.8. And so what I would... After talking with the clerk, what we'll probably do is go through and go through all of those or mark those that are past 180 days, bring that to the committee's attention under the purpose of the rule. If the... If a majority of the committee does not decide to keep it on the agenda, it will be gone by operation of this rule.
So I guess my follow-up to that is just, again, to point out that this agenda has been fairly well-loaded with ordinances that have been tabled or held in committee. Some of these are 2017s. Everyone around this horseshoe has had adequate time as chair of a committee of the whole to have withdrawn or made that motion. So I think it's a little disingenuous to try to pull... I'm sorry, I'm not directly referring to you, Mr. Circle.
No, I was simply going to say that I...
I'm just saying it's a little disingenuous to be applying this rule. When the rule's been in place, the... I mean, I've got... We've got 2017 sitting in here. So to all of a sudden throw out this rule because it's uncomfortable. We've all chaired the committee of the whole meeting, well, except Alderman Williams, but we've all had multiple opportunities to bring this rule up and to ask that things be withdrawn. So I think that by default, the least... The path of least ill will to the councilmen who have ordinances being held here is to allow us to keep them there and to act on them tonight if we want to.
I think we want to, if I may, we want consistency from this point forward. I think that's what we're trying to get to. So Corporation Counsel, then Alderman McMinim, Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Redpath, and then Alderman Donlin.
And I simply... I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt the discussion. I took the discussion the other evening as kind of a consensus that the clerk and I would... We would go through and mark it so we would bring it to everybody's attention. My thought was, and perhaps inaccurate, that we would do that going forward with the next committee meeting where we would mark those and then the majority would have to decide for those that are past 180 days, you know, whether or not they should stay on the agenda.
Alderman McMinim.
Well, it's too bad, Alderman Conley, that your predecessor's not in the council because he was the guy that used to... Alderman Thailand's the guy that used to always take these off. Some have been around here for a long, remember that. So we have been all deficient in not taking these off. But the rule is very clear. It says that the ordinances come off after six months unless the council takes action to keep them on. And the councils never took action. So the requirement of the ordinance, of the rule, has not been met. And the reason we haven't had this discussion is because no one, to my recollection, has brought an ordinance beyond the 180-day period or the... If we extend it by six months, the 360-day period. And so that's why it's coming up for the first time tonight. Because... And it's kind of an extreme example we've got tonight. We've got an ordinance that was introduced three years ago. It's kind of an extreme example. And no action was taken to extend it. So there's no reason to get upset about this. It's just good for us to remember what the rules are.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Redpath, and then Alderman Donlin.
Well, I got a question on the rules because it seems like... First of all, how do we create rules for the city council? Because every time I bring up, you know, something, I'm told that we can't create rules because of the consent decree. And it seems somebody created these rules. And I know they've been changed since the initial first... Since Abraham Lincoln and Chuck Redpath started the automatic deal. How... What's the... How do we do that? Because the other thing is, okay, we've got rules. It's time to follow them. We got to follow all of them. We've got rules that say that people can't sign up unless they go... They sign up... They can't speak until they sign up 48... What, 24, 48 hours before? Okay? We... It's a rule. We got other rules. Are we... If we're going to follow the rules, we need to follow the rules. That's... I mean, we can't say we're not going to follow one and then... Or follow them all and then not follow one or two or whatever just at our discretion. That's the way I read it. So my question is, how do we create rules? How do we amend rules? How do we do that?
Yeah, I'll let Corporation Counsel interpret that. But with regards to people coming up and speaking, it's really Abraham Lincoln, government of other people, by the people, for the people. We need to allow them to speak. With regards to this, this is an ordinance that will change city code. So that's the differential is one is you're allowing the public to speak in general of an issue that might concern them. And... But with regards to changing code, I think that's what we're trying to address here. But Corporation Counsel can speak to the rules part associated with any changes of the parameters of ordinances.
I was simply going to say, I mean, the... This council has changed two or three rules over the last two or three years. And there's simply an ordinance that's brought to change the rules. There's a published, you know, set of rules. I think... I think council coordinator actually asked me for the updated copy with all of the most recent ordinance changes electronically. But we just have a set of rules and procedures. You bring an ordinance to change them. And there's, I think, been about three, I think, in the last, you know, three years. I think there's been ordinances to change some of the rules at different times. And the rules are the legislative rules of the council. They act within the state, what the state law allows for, you know, council procedures. And... But the council rules are not city code. They're the rules of the city council adopted by ordinance. I don't know if that helps.
Robert's Rules of Order as well.
Well, and the rules actually incorporate Robert's Rules of Order, you know, to the extent that they're not different, you know, from what these specific rules are.
Alderman Redpath.
Alderman Hanauer, thank you for referring to my good friend Abraham Lincoln. And I, we both appreciate your oratory. As a point of order, we put things... We hold ordinances in committee or hold them for... That need consideration. But one thing we don't do that we used to do, tabled or remaining in committee, was we don't reflect on the agenda that if these are ordinances that have been tabled or if they're just being held in committee. Because it makes a difference on how those ordinances come back out. So I... Mr. Clerk, if you would, please identify the ordinances that are tabled versus the ordinances that remain in committee because it's a different vote. It's a simple majority of six votes for ordinances remaining in committee and a tabled ordinance takes a supermajority. So we need to know that, too. So would you please, in the future, when there's ordinances listed here, that they are tabled or they are remaining in committee?
We'll do that for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Donlin.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you. And since we're talking about rules tonight, I would like us to either go into executive session tonight or next week and review the executive session minutes. I don't believe we've done that in a while. And of course, the state statute, which is the ultimate rule, say that we should do that every six months.
Very good. Any other discussion on ordinance number 2018-1110?
Mayor.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hold this for two weeks, please.
Okay.
Or I guess until next, two weeks is our next council meeting, right?
Two weeks.
Correct.
If you just make a motion to, you know, postpone till the 16th for next council meeting.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-442, ordinance regarding Comcast Cable. And it's my understanding that's gonna be held for two weeks as well.
And that has to do with, Mayor, that has to do with the availability of the representative. I, I was under the impression we might be able to do it today, but they'd ask for the 16th and that was my mistake, for the next council meeting.
If I might make a point.
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
This is a very interesting ordinance that really reflects a lot of our, our wards. People have trouble with cable TV all the time. So I encourage the public, if you have the problems in the past and you have complaints, you need to let your alderman know because we're gonna be discussing this next week with a representative from the cable TV industry. And we wanna make sure that we're doing what your will is. So please contact your alderman with your concerns, your questions, so we can have a proper debate with this person that's coming in. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Just a point of clarification, it's just Comcast we're dealing with on this one.
I, I can't hear you, Erin.
Correct.
It, just Comcast for this one.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think we've had, we've had I-3 in here enough, so.
Whoever it is, they got people mad.
Yeah, this one is.
Comcast has plenty of people mad, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this particular ordinance deals with Comcast Cable. Alderwoman Conley, I know, and Hanauer, some other wards have been impacted by I-3 broadband. But the next one for next city council meeting would be with regards to Comcast Cable.
And Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
And, and you know, I gotta tell you that I've had a lot of people, they complained about the, the cost. The cost of cable television throughout, anywhere you go is, is expensive. I mean, it's gone up. I, I don't like the cost either. And my wife, every time she pays a bill, she lets me know that she doesn't like the cost. But, but it's, but it's a situation where, I mean, I guess you, you cut the cord and, you go without it and then you're paying a bunch of individual fees to different YouTube's or whatever. And, you know, the options, if you look at the options that, that's out there, I-3 for, for some of the places that have it, or DTV, DirecTV and that, every, you know, people just, no one's happy with, with what they have. They'll be happy for a while and then they slowly jack the price up on you. I don't care who they are, they'll slowly get you. And then, that, you know, they have the same problems. You call, nobody wants to talk to you. So I mean, Comcast is no different than, they're all the same. They, I don't care, we, we could bring someone else in here and they'd be really good for a year and then they would, they would do the exact same thing. So I want people to understand, you can look at other, other municipalities, other, other areas and they, they have the same issues we have. So I don't know, I, I don't know if there's anything that we can do as a body to fix it. If we don't approve this, I guess cable TV goes away and a lot of people are not gonna, they're, they're gonna be, a lot of them, they don't have I-3. They'll, they'll have to be forced to go to satellite and wait till you go satellite and it snows during the Super Bowl and you can't watch a dang Super Bowl. So I had somebody calling me about that. I couldn't do anything about it. So, but I just wanted to bring that up. It's, it's.
Yeah, if Corporation Council can, you know, he knows the history of it, but it used to be municipalities could control pricing, but that's no longer the case.
Just, just, yeah, just very briefly, I think we've talked about this before. Alderman Hanauer, you're exactly correct. The city's ability to address specific issues relating to like programming or costs or even areas of service, things of that nature are severely restricted by federal and state law now, preempted, you know, preempting home rule and so on. So it was back, I was almost gonna try to make a small joke with Alderman Redpath, but back when he first started, the city actually did control the rates.
I used to park my horse around.
The city actually did, that was Dimension Cable, as I recall, but that was a predecessor to these, 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 this company. However, the federal government passed a far-reaching federal communications law that preempted all localities, all cities, townships, et cetera, et cetera, basically to have any ability to, relating to basically programming, cost, service, et cetera. The state has had a follow-on law, again, further restricting. So the only areas the city really has some very, very limited authority is the term of the agreement and certain customer service provisions as provided by state law. And we have incorporated that into our city code. But again, Alderman Hanauer and also Alderman Redpath, we just have very limited authority with respect to any things related to cable or the communications industry, you know, the AT&amp;Ts, phone companies, different things of that nature. We, the city has virtually no authority regarding performance or costing.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
Corporation Council, you brought up a, a good point that from your research, one area where the cities do have some influence or some control is customer service. And that's the area which, where I hear the, a, a great deal of concern and, and disagreement with the services that are being rendered. It used to be that Comcast had one service location for the whole Springfield area and it was on the far east side. Now it's on the far west side along Route 4. And my observation by going there to see how they do their operations, typically have two service officers inside helping the cus, the customers. And there's a line outside. And if you show up with your equipment to turn it in, they'll say, sorry, you've gotta make an appointment, come on back. And if you try to call them on the phone, good luck trying to get to a person. If someone's just died, good luck trying to find their password and their ID to let you talk, to return equipment of a dead person. And meanwhile, they'll keep charging you for two or three months because you can't return the equipment because you don't know what the procedures are, because you don't know the password or the ID number. It's just ridiculous what our public has to deal with, with the customer service function of Comcast to, so to any extent that we can beef up their requirements to address concerns and issues from the public, we gotta do that. And if there's any leeway in the federal law that you're referring to that allows us to do so, let's, let's maximize it and let's get some professional advice from those that know those federal rules and what municipalities can do to try to put some pressure on Comcast to serve the public better. There's a lot, there's a lot of upset people out there about this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that subject?
One other question.
Alderman Hanauer.
Now, we were negotiating with them. Have we finished the negotiations or where, where, would you consider it that we've?
The, there were, yes, the answer is there were a couple of pending items regarding a couple of service-related issues having to do with the extension of service, you know, how far, costing and so on. So that has been, that has been concluded. And we can go through that at the committee or at the council meeting if that, you know, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, is this a, a contract that's already been signed or is it, so we can't make amendments to the contract to follow up? I thought my McMenamin's statement about the service, because that is, that is exactly what we're all hearing. The service is terrible.
What I can do is I will provide each of you a copy of what the state law provides for the service standards. They've adopted service standards. We, the city have, you may recall, adopted through our ordinance for purposes of being able to, when the issue came up about I-3 broadband. If you recall, there was some requirements that the city, or the city adopted from the state. So I will circulate those so we can be prepared to go through those or talk about those.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion or comments on that? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-086, an ordinance approving 30 separate farm leases with various tenants for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2021-086 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath.
Doug or, or Todd, one of you, if you could come up a minute, I just wanna ask you, we, we had a discussion about a specific lease that we were gonna, so I understand that there's, there's a dispute, so what's gonna happen with that?
The, so basically with this being passed tonight, the, the farm lease that with this other parcel was, that's in question, that was a part of, we're gonna pull that parcel out of it and then we'll figure out how we're gonna move forward with that parcel, you know, with, I guess with the dispute, I guess you'd say.
Okay.
And then we'll follow back. That would be a new ordinance, a new lease.
So you're pulling it out of this?
Do, do we need to make an amendment?
No, because it's, it's only the lease that's getting amended. And there is nothing, I don't believe, in the actual ordinance that describes the specific parcel.
I was gonna say, it's, excuse me, don't mean to, it's my understanding that the, the area of indispute was removed out of the farm lease, so it'll become the subject of a different lease.
Yes.
So that will address the issue that the committee raised or heard information about. So by passing this, that addresses that issue, but that parcel that was removed from the farm lease by agreement of the parties would then take, would be addressed through a separate lease. So that way it can be addressed in a way that was discussed at the committee.
The gentleman that asked about that last week is here, but there's nothing really for us to debate because that's gonna be something you're gonna handle internally. Is that correct?
We have to bring back to the council.
That is correct, yeah.
So they'll be in, you will be in contact with them?
We just, we just, yes, yes. We, we just, we don't wanna hold up the farm leases.
No, I understand.
As part of this part.
Nor do I.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
I think we can vote now.
Let's try it again.
Oh, good. The voting is now open. Go ahead and cast your vote. And Alderman Williams, if you tell the clerk how you wanna vote.
Yes. Noted. Alderman McMenamin, is yours up?
Yes, it's working.
Yeah, thank you. So the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-091, an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of Ash Grove Apartments for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2021-091 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman Williams, had your vote? Thank you.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, and none voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 02, or 2021-092. And was that an ominous vote?
Um, what are we gonna do, one or four?
091, 091.
Oh, 91. Okay, sorry.
Do them in order. Yes, I'd ask for an ominous vote on 92 through 102, Mayor.
Thank you.
So moved.
Yeah, we just did 91. And you asked for the ominous vote?
Yes, please. I seconded.
We can do that, can't we, council?
Yes. Did, did you vote in Ash Grove?
Yeah. 2021-092, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Ball Township. Ordinance 2021-093, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Capital Township of the city of Springfield. Ordinance 2021-094, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Ball Township to the city of Springfield. 2021-095, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in current township to the city of Springfield. 2021-096, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in current township of the city of Springfield. 2021-097, an ordinance annexing described properties located in Gardner Township to the city of Springfield. 2021-098, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Rochester Township to the city of Springfield. 2021-099, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Springfield Township to the city of Springfield. 2021-100, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Springfield Township to the city of Springfield. 2021-101, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Woodside Township to the city of Springfield. And 2021-102, an ordinance annexing certain described properties located in Ball Township and Woodside Township of the city of Springfield. And there's, is there a motion?
So we need to go ahead and adjourn for a public hearing.
Okay.
So.
Is there a motion to adjourn to a public hearing?
I moved.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in a public hearing and I think we do have some individuals signed up to speak on this particular item. The clerk, would you like to read the ones that have signed up? And then we'll allow any others to come forward as well.
Mayor, before we do, I have a question.
Alderman Hanauer.
Okay, before, have, have, have we had any meetings with any of these, any of these property owners before, before it came forward? Did the city actually go, have, have meetings with the people on Spalding Orchard, the people throughout the different townships? Or did we just send them letters and just say, hey, you're coming in? Kinda like what we did six years ago?
Yeah, this is handled like zoning. So just like a zoning matter in your ward or any ward, they're sent notification to all the impacted properties. And then part of that process is the hearing portion at city council or regional planning. And then we go from that. So that is your public process. But Corporation Council can explain the process if you would.
Well, real, real quick, I can tell you from, from the calls and everything that, that I got, we didn't meet with them. They couldn't get much information from the city. They just got a form letter saying that they were gonna get annexed and, and it's kinda the same way we did it last time. And that's not a good way to go about it. I'm sorry, but you know, we didn't know about, about this until our phones started getting, ringing off the hook. I think I had a lot of them out in my ward and people were not happy. And so we had to take the heat and we knew nothing about it. I think that the city, if we're gonna annex people in or try to, we at least owe a group of people to sit down with them and answer their questions, tell them what, what the benefits are, try to sell them. You might get some of them to change their mind, but I, I'll tell you right now, there's 25 people out on Spalding Orchard Road that are stinking mad. And I did not get one call from one person. And last week, we had nobody that were, raised their hand, said, I'd like to come in. And I, I think that, you know, we can't, we, we can't continue to do the things we're doing, you know, on these land grabs. I just don't think that's right.
Thank you. And with regards to that, there, there's a law of notification. That's what we're going to follow. And Corporation Council can speak to that. With regards to the last series of annexations, that was lake properties. I walked into a room similar, actually, as 99 people against annexations and answered their questions related to that. At that time, Alderman Redpath received calls that you're, you know, saying, described to you as what's happening in your ward. And then he said, we have to meet on this or we should meet on this. So that's what we did, answered the questions. And I imagine when everybody walked out of that, I'm not sure if we still had an individual in favor of it, but really you have to look at what's in the best interest of the city and, you know, the direction we wanna go. In that case, we had roads that weren't being repaired that we could take better care of. In this case, there's properties that, you know, these are hole-in-the-donuts. And those are some, I imagine some, in talking to Nate Bottom, some of those properties do border the roads we're taking care of. They're receiving the services from the city. So it's logical from that standpoint to move in that direction. But with regards to notification, that's the first thing you have to do with regards to letting people know this is a possibility. And just like last time, we didn't annex people in until January. And so that's what would happen here. So we're in April. So this gives us time to have those meetings, have those discussions, and that's part of the process. But Corporation Council, I'd ask him to explain the process. And then Alderman Donlin, would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
Well, just, just very briefly, I think everyone is pretty familiar with the annexation process, but the first step is always notification. There's certain statutory requirements, both for the property owners and also the various taxing bodies have to receive notices. If you recall, the last time when there was a fairly large group of annexation parcels, what ended up happening was that the notices were given and then meetings happened afterwards as questions started coming up. And I think that's the process that the mayor was referring to with Alderman Redpath, where notices went out and then there were follow-up meetings with people to go through the pros and cons of it. And again, the, the city is required to do certain things to give a notice. And then it's, there can be a process after the notices are given to allow time for meetings and so on. And historically, at least, that's been the way the city has handled it.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've not heard one person argue that we're not following the statute or the rules that the counselor just outlined. What we're, what we're, what we have a problem with, and Mayor, you alluded to it last time, I thought we did a fine job when the lake properties were up for lease, which I voted for. It was city property, it made sense. We had a public meeting and we, we talked about it with the residents. At least they knew what was going on, had their say. And, you know, when we talked about annexing property not around the lake six years ago, we, I, I particularly brought up the issue that if this ever impacts areas adjacent to my ward, that I request that we speak with those property owners first, get their opinion, hear the feedback. Who knows? The city might have something such as water that they want and it could be worked out as a part of the annexation process. And that wasn't done. I intend to vote no because of that. And, you know, I encourage you, if this is something that wants to be pursued in the future, that, you know, nothing to stop these ordinances, if they don't pass tonight, from being reintroduced. But we speak to the property owners, hear what they have to say, let them know what the city has to offer. Those are all reasonable requests. And, you know, everyone that called me, I echo Alderman Hanauer's comments, everyone that called me, it was from all over, it wasn't just areas near my ward, were against it. They didn't know a lot about it. And quite frankly, I didn't either. So I intend to vote no. Thank you.
And with regards to that, the process we're following this time around is the same one with the lake properties. Started the same way with the notifications. Calls came, I'm sure, because Alderman Redpath called me and that's when we set up the public meeting in that particular instance.
Which how?
Yep. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to echo what's already been said. One of the biggest concerns and I think some of the greatest area of misinformation that people had was the actual fiscal impact that this ordinance would have, or their, their specific ordinance would have on them. We did request and get later this afternoon a financial analysis from, from the city, which I, I have to say, again, it came late in the day on a Tuesday, I'm at work, so I was not able to give it as much attention as I had planned to or I would like to. But kinda from a brief, brief sort of going over it, it looks like even our own, our own director of the budget couldn't say, you know, exact, with, with exact certainty what sort of an impact this would have on each individual property. So I, I really think, Mayor, I understand that we're, we're following the letter of, of the, of the law here on this. And then I certainly encourage that we should, but these are great properties. I know there's one that would be in Ward 8 for sure, on, on Cokie Mill. You know, you're talking about people who have an existing lifestyle. You know, you're talking about people who have an existing lifestyle that I think, in a lot of ways, the perception is that won't fit with the city. You know, we can't bring our horses into the city. I wouldn't, I would hate to lose that farm, that's, my granddaughter loves that place. So, you know, I think we need to maybe modify the process, i- if this is something we intend to move forward with, and, and in different properties. Because I, I agree, we should be closing these, these donut holes. It's, it's important for us to do that, but it needs to be done in a way that's respectful of everyone. I, I guess, speaking of my granddaughter, yes, I'm watching more of these kids' shows again, but we were watching, look at Mr. Rogers. You know, I would like you guys to be our neighbors, but I want you to want to be the neighbor. We want you to want to be in Springfield. And you need to know what the benefits are to you, because there are a lot. But we also need to know what their needs and concerns are, and this process did not allow for that. Mayor, unfortunately, you weren't here last week, to be able to hear the, the concerns, the misinformation that's out there, and some of it's the fear that people have. That shouldn't be. You shouldn't be afraid to be a part of the city. It's a good city. But if, if we want to do this again, and pick this up another time, I will be voting no. I, I think that there's a certain amount of respect that you have for people that you want to be part of your, your community, and that was not followed this time, and, but I would like to see that if we could move forward with some fact sheets, with some basic information, so people know what the city offers them. I think that would be great. I'd also like to know, I mean, I've heard there are quite a few properties, large properties, around Lake Springfield that are not in, in the city still. So, I mean, we own the lake, how, how do we have donut holes around our own lake? I think, I would like to actually have a list of all the properties that are immediately adjacent to the Lake Springfield, that are not currently included in the city of Springfield. And I'd like to know who owns them, so that we can reach out to those people personally and individually, and get their buy-in into our community. So if we could have that for, I don't know how long that would take, maybe a week? We could have that for next week?
Yeah, with regards to the, Corporation Council can answer the question, but I believe any property that's brought in, you are grandfathered in with your current zoning. So if you had any type of animals, it's grandfathered in that way, isn't that correct?
Well, whatever, excuse me, whatever the, you know, existing use, if it's a, this has happened many times with, a lot of times, it's been inconsistent zoning, like maybe there's a gas station, you know, gets annexed in, and even though the zoning doesn't allow it, it's grandfathered. You know, that use, whatever that use is, is grandfathered, so it's not changed, just by virtue of the, you know, just by virtue of the annexation.
Well, with regards to the properties around our lake, that's what we definitely want to protect, and that's what we've had done previously, and that's what our intentions are, especially when it comes to our only water resource.
I, I just think that would be, maybe that might be a more logical place to start, since it's such an immediate impact on, on Springfield resources. Again, and I appreciate that, Mayor. I think probably people would have liked to hear that, that, the simple fact that your grandfathered in with your livestock, but none of that information was given. If we could just, moving forward, treat people with, with consideration and, and respect for where they are, and with a little more pride of what we can offer. We don't need to strong-arm people in.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. So, I get a little older, but I remember close to, to coming in, I, I would want to say that we annexed some properties in on South Grand, it would, it would have been in Ward Three. And then the same scenario came up, you know, I did go and talk to the gentleman. At that time, we, we talked about providing, when we came across annexations, a, a welcome package to, to new citizens. Have we, have we gotten to that point? The reason why I ask that is, is the, the property in my ward, I did talk to the gentleman, a very nice gentleman, you know, he understands, and, you know, but I, I, I did tell him, you know, right now, you know, I would, I would not vote to bring him in, but I'm definitely considering that, because in, in, in our ward, that property is truly a donut hole. And, you know, I want to give him some time to really prepare, but when it does come back, I, I do have plans to, to bring that property in, into the city. So I, I just wanted to know where we're at with that. I think that's important. I think, you know, going along with Alderman Conley, excuse me, was saying that we, we do want to make sure that people we are bringing into property, that we are bringing into Springfield, have full knowledge of the services and benefits of Springfield, as well as having, you know, me, I pride myself, and, and all of us, I know we pride ourselves in being good aldermen, and, and that's something that you get with, you know, coming into the city, is having strong representation. And, and, you know, for the area of Ward Two, to make a uniform, you know, as we go forth, I do look to bring that in. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Yeah, I know, and some of the previously annexed properties along South Grand, surprisingly, they didn't have city water, so we're looking at extending that to them. The other item that I'd ask, I don't know if he wants to come up here now, but, you know, it seems like, I'm not sure where we'll stand with regards to the votes tonight. I think, for myself, I think it'd be premature to take a vote tonight, because it sounds like council members say they're open to the concept, if we talk to the neighbors. So what happens if it gets voted down? We'll proceed in that direction. I don't want to give anybody false hope, saying that, oh, this is it, because we will have those discussions, and it's important, because there's, I'd ask Director Nate Bottom to come forward, on the information that was provided to the city council members as part of the ordinance packet, where the roadways that border a lot of the properties, and we are taking care of those. There are areas that we are providing fire protection. So from that standpoint, when you talk about holes in the donut, that's where individuals within our city are paying for those services, and we'd like to bring everybody into that realm for providing those services they receive already. The other aspect is with regards to zoning or development, or as Alderman Gregory had alluded to, with regards to any aspect, if you're in a TIF area, and I'm not sure if they, off South Grand you could be, if you're north of South Grand, in that geographic area between South Grand and Cook, in the general boundaries, you could be in a TIF area where there'd be funds available for different programs associated with housing, things of that nature. But Director Bottom, if you could, with regards to the properties we're talking about, if you want to give a percentage, or however you want to explain, the number of roadways we are currently taking care of, within the impacted properties that we're talking about.
So, I believe, from my surveyor, 130 of the properties are along city roads at this time. There are also, like Spalding Orchard Road is actually maintained by the County Highway Department, that would still remain theirs. Whenever annexing a property, you go to the far right-of-way line, and we already had the majority of these, of these roads, because the property across the street was already ours. I believe really the only area where we would be taking on additional roadways, for most part, is around the, the lakeside area, just, just south of the, the New Marina.
Okay. Alderman Donlin.
Just a follow-up, a comment and a question. You know, first of all, regarding the, the properties along South Grand, just because you annex a property, doesn't make it all, all automatically put in the TIF. It's quite a, quite a process, and that, that wouldn't do it. The, the argument that fire protection is impacted really isn't relevant here, because areas in the city of Springfield are obviously protected by the City of Springfield Fire Department. Areas outside the city of Springfield, adjacent to or surrounded by the city of Springfield, by agreement with fire protection districts, are protected also. So really, I guess the heart of my question is, I never, I never heard anybody explain, why do we want to do this? What's the purpose? What's the benefit to the city of Springfield municipality? Nobody said that.
Yeah, I think when it comes down to services, I think Fire Department, Fire Department can tell you, we received a $1.4 million cut. Alderman Conley brought up the fiscal impact. I think with regards to those numbers, Director McCarty is calculating that, what would the impact be to the residents out here, and then also to the city. But the city would receive, you know, property tax, and any, I'm not sure what businesses, there are some along that area, their sales tax dollars, of course, would come into the city with regards to that.
So it's money. Okay.
And so, but Director McCarty can explain the fiscal impact that he's working on. But again, with regards to this process, it would not take effect till January, and that's why you have to do the notification, that's the first step. And then after that, you have the discussions, and make a determination on the direction we'd like to go as a city. Alderman McMinim.
I'm glad Director Bottom just mentioned how 130 of these properties are on city roads, and that's a really significant fact. You know, the city gets revenue sharing from the state of Illinois, it's called motor fuel tax money, and it's given to the municipalities based on the population of the municipality. So, to the extent we have more population within the city, we get more revenue to maintain our roads that those that are in the holes in the donut are using. Not just the roads in front of their homes, but to go just about anywhere, you have to use city roads. So it's appropriate that the city get the revenue from the motor fuel tax monies. We also get, the municipalities get a, it used to be 10% of income tax revenue, the state of Illinois collects, gets redistributed to municipalities based on their population. So to the extent we have more population, that's more revenue that the city gets, and that should get, based on the location of the holes in the donut. I remember when I, Mr. Mayor, when your father was mayor, my wife and I and our young family, we lived on, near Sacred Heart Griffin, and there was a property surrounded by the city that was a hole in the donut. It was about a half an acre. And this guy, he owned it, he was so proud that he could do his fireworks without our city police coming in. You know, it just thrilled him to do that, but the neighbors all around him were upset by that. But he was protected, because he was in the township and not in the city. I think that same neighbor, probably back then, we didn't have a rule against burning leaves, but any of the neighbors around him, if he had been burning leaves, now we, we have protection. Those with asthma and lung problems, they're protected, because the city has a, a rule against burning leaves. It's for the general public, to protect the general public. The, the will of the majority, you know, has a way, has a say in these kinds of things. So when you talk about holes in the donut, you're talking about a property that's completely surrounded, or mostly surrounded in one direction or two directions, by city government residents and employees, that they want to have a say in how it's conducted. We've got properties near my ward, they're in the township, and they have just atrocious housing conditions, where if the city sent inspections, inspectors to check out the housing conditions, we could write them up, and do something about the neglect that's taking place in those particular properties. I'm thinking, talking about West Lennox, near, just a little bit east of MacArthur Boulevard. But those particular property owners, they can't get the benefit of holding the donut, because it's too large an area, so they're not going to get that benefit to come in the city, to get more housing inspectors to try to improve the conditions. The township doesn't, and the county structure doesn't have the housing inspectors like the city does. I'm going to vote yes for this, Mr. Mayor. I agree with those that are saying this kind of came in in an awkward way. We had too many different townships coming in all at the same time, and two different, and vastly different situations for the different townships. It was a big mistake to try to bring in Spalding Orchard Road, because those have been some of our most vocal folks against this, and they are pretty far out there on the outskirts of the city. But we've got holes in the donut in Ward Seven, you know, that's, it's pretty much in the core of the city, and we should clean that up. So, I think you've got a good suggestion, Mayor, to hold this, but if we, if we do take a vote tonight, and you don't get the votes, I hope you bring it back with, and we have more discussion, and justify the rationale for annexing truly holes in the donut.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. I just, I'm sorry, I, I can't let this go. Just a quick point of clarification. We did not receive a $1.4 million cut to our fire department. We voted for it, including you, Mr. Mayor, that you're, you voted against your own budget. I don't think these properties are going to balance that cut to the fire department. Sorry.
Good, Mayor.
And actually, I'm, I'm sorry, Ralph, Ralph, I also want to add, so if we have things like someone's shooting off fireworks in an unincorporated area within our boundaries, we have noise ordinances. You're allowed to violate a noise ordinance, and our police, I mean, we can work with that. In terms of things like burning leaves, I mean, there's a state law that regulates that too. Technically, you can't be burning leaves within 1,500 feet of a municipality that has an ordinance regulating leaf burning. I mean, clearly, we're not, we're not enforcing all of those rules either, so, yeah, I, I think we just need to have better outreach, better information, and a better sense of what we're giving people.
Alderman Hanauer.
Mayor, you know, some of the ones on Spalding Orchard, they brought up some, some interesting things. One guy's got 15 acres out there, I think it's about 15 acres. He said for him to bag the leaves that he has, it would cost him, just in bags, $1,500, just in bags, in the spring, and then again in the fall. Currently, he, he burns them. He, they, they do their, you know, he said to, and, you know, that's something that isn't, I, with all due respect to, to Mr. McCarty, what's that do, the increase in, in, you know, you guys have, what, 10 acres or five acres over there? How many, how many bags of leaves would you have that you'd have to take to Evans? What's that going to do to that? That, what cost is that going to be to the city? I think it's great, you know, that, that, we have to look at what the cost to the city is, and there's a lot of, lot of other costs associated with bringing these guys in. The, the neighborhood down by Chatham, which is, I mean, you, you can throw a rock and hit the Chatham Water Tower, for God's sakes, but we're wanting to bring them in, those roads are terrible. And, and, I mean, has there been a cost study? What it would cost to do that? We, we all have roads that we want done now, and we can't get them done, we're doing a good, Nate's doing as good a job as he can, but then we're wanting to bring in other roads that are, that are worse conditions than what some of our, ours are. Guess what? They're jumping in the front of the line. And, you know, we get into, let's take care of what we got first.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought up that section, because I drove out there, and that's Borders Bridgeview Beach, that area. And so those are smaller roads, those are kind of like the lake roads. We have an agreement with CWLP, with Public Works, and paving those on a five-year plan. Before, we got calls from people that were annexed in, hadn't had their road done in 30 years. And so that's part of the issue. Nobody takes care of those roads. Nate, Nate had spoke to it, or either that or CWLP. When it snows, it's not the township that goes out there, it's us that go out there and plow the snow.
But we need to tell the township.
So again, that goes back to, we're providing services to areas, and I'll respect the council's decision with regards to this, but I don't want to give preconceived notions. You know, we, this will move forward with regards to rewinding the clock, so to speak, and having those conversations, because again, we went out to the, I'm going to use the lake area, and I'm sure I'll hear the comment that, well, the city owned those properties. Well, the problem there was, there is, nobody, they'd always point the finger. City would say, it's Woodside Township. Woodside Township would say, it's CWLP. Well, the part you're pointing out is the same situation. What we're trying to do is provide the services to areas that we are providing some services, but we'll do the assessment, and then that situation, I walked into a room, again, 99 people were against it. Everybody was against it. I'm not sure if they were against it, I'm pretty sure they were all against it after we had the discussion. I answered all the questions, we came back here, it passed because it made sense. And since that time, we have been repaving the roads out around the lake. We have been doing that. So, I don't want anybody to leave here, you know, if it goes down, you need to be aware that we will probably, you know, reassess, and move forward, and just determine what the best process would be with regards to what would make sense. And I, I just don't want to give you a false sense of security, because what we're trying to do, we feel, you know, I, I truly believe, with the holes in the donut, it's the best option as you move forward. Because when you look at the long-term longevity of where you're at, or, you know, with regards to what we're providing service-wise, that's the direction we should be going. So we do have people signed up to speak, unless someone else wants to comment.
We're not paving the roads around the lake fast enough.
I knew you'd say that, but it was fast, a lot faster than what it was. You have to admit that. All right. Carol Sutton? Sam Arnold, Don Fenton, Felton, and Rick Zion.
And this is all?
Oh, I'm sorry, this was a House issue.
And just, just very briefly, I wanted to mention to you a couple of points. One is the city under the, you know,
Yeah, we want to take the annexations right now.
Under its statutory Under its statutory provision, uh, is actually very limited, is actually very limited to, uh, it cannot do, that's why areas like, um, I think Lake Town or different areas like that, any area that's larger than 60 acres is not eligible. So, there are limits under the statute of what actually can, uh, occur. So, you get into, I don't know if Alderman McMinim was talking about that, where there's some larger areas, but the statute actually restricts actually what the city can do. So, it's not, it's not, uh, you know, open-ended.
What we would ask is anybody that wants to talk about the annexations, if you would just, uh, take turns and come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. Regardless if you signed up or not, it'd be easier for the process. So, if you had come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe Nielsen is on the list next.
You can come. We'll just have anybody in the audience that want to come up. They can come up and state your name and address. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Penny Patterson and Margie O'Brien, 1110 South Cokie Mill Road. Uh, thank you for hearing us. Uh, we've just moved here from out of state. Uh, lost my father-in-law, sorry, I lost my mother-in-law last year. We're, uh, wanted to come up here, uh, to kind of help take care of him. The only reason why we're here is this property came up and we wanted to have horses. So, should this property ever be annexed, we will have to leave, um, and go where we can have horses. We have two now and I understand they'll be grandfathered, but when I retire in a couple of years, I might want an additional one. And so, we don't want to make that decision now, like on what we have to be grandfathered in going forward. So, uh, we just moved in September from out of state. So, this is all pretty shocking to us. So.
Yeah, we're sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
And then if Corporation Council can explain, uh, grandfathering, um, it will, you can have the horses or expand it, but, uh, I don't know what happens if they want to sell the property. Does that go with the property or is that when it ceases with regards to their ability to provide the lifestyle?
The grandfather would stop when the use ceases, not the property owner, but the use. So, if the use continues, that's a reason why, for example, a, um, you know, gas station that's brought in, there's been a couple of those that I recall, um, where they were annexed. But so long as the use continues, uh, the grandfather process stays in place without regard to, uh, who, um, you know, who owns it. One, one issue comes up and you may, I think every member here is familiar with this, is for example, if the use stops, then the grandfather, uh, ability basically goes away. And I believe it's six months or a year and we've had, we have a couple of zoning cases, for example, where that's going on right now, where, uh, the, the property was grandfathered for a use, a particular use regarding parking or, uh, like apartments and so on. Um, but when the use stopped, then the grandfather, uh, provision that allowed it to continue that way and, uh, not consistent with zoning went away. Had they continued using it, it would never go away.
And it's also, it's just frustrating because we bought a property that basically has a brand-new horse barn facility that's more square feet than the house actually is. Because the previous one burned down and you build a brand-new one. Now, if, you know, we have to sell to move out of the city, it, basically, we lose the value of our property because half of the property can't be used for what it was built for.
I think is what he's saying.
Yes, Solomon.
If they would take away the, I mean-
On the zoning part?
Yes.
Yeah, see, that would stay in place. Uh, if, uh, but if you, say you cease to have horses, say you sold your horses, and the period of time of, we'd have to check that, and we'll put this in writing. If the period of time was six months or what, a year, I think it's six months, but if it was a year, whatever that is, we'll clarify it. And you didn't have horses and after that timeframe you wanted to do it, that's when you wouldn't be able to, correct? Counselor?
Yeah, and it also-
Your mic's off.
Yeah. To the extent that there was an ordinance that prohibited horses in a residential area, uh, then that is correct. It would, it would end up expiring, but provided you continued it or that use continued, then it would, would continue without respect to the, you know, without respect to that ordinance.
Yeah, same with your barn and whatever you're using it for, it's grandfathered in as long as that use continues without that disruption period. And we'll have to clarify it. If it's six months or a year, then you continue that on into perpetuity.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
And then Alderman Redpath, I think, had a question.
Well, not a question for them, but, uh, you know, I own three farms and I can tell you that my farm property is, 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 um, it's, it's taxed differently than the property I have with my home.
Right.
The point being that Alderman Conley, um, said earlier about these kind of things should have taken place on the front end, Mayor. That's, I think that's the problem that, because we had a guy come up here the other day, said, I got 40 acres. I got water right out of the road and, uh, they tell me I can't have the water. I mean, I don't understand that. Why, I mean, the benefits, the benefits to be, uh, to come into the city that they didn't, a lot of these people didn't know. And so, I can't blame them for being upset.
Sure.
But we, we got, we got the horse before, the cart before the horse here and we, we should have been talking to them, but this is the benefit for you and this is how this could work. And the way that the property's taxed, and these people don't want to, if they build a barn, I know what it costs, I'd just build a barn. I know what it costs. It's enormous and they'd be losing out and, uh, I don't want to see that happen. It's, that's the problem, Mayor. That's, the process is, is backwards. We should have been talking and then voting. And now we're voting and then you want to talk. And I think it's the backwards. So.
Unfortunately, we can't rewind time, but Director McCarty, if you would take note of the property address, that way we can determine what the tax bill would be with regards to once you're annexed in, if you're annexed in, uh, what that would be versus what you're currently paying. And then we could say, calculate that differential.
But, but changing the use of the property for them because they come into the city, if you've got 40 acres, burning leaves is not going to bother anybody for a long way. I mean, it, it's just common sense that we're, we're, we're backwards here. We got, we got to figure this out because there are people out there that want to come in the city, really are.
And that's why they're here. I'm going to allow them to speak so we can make notes and address their concerns.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Conley.
If I may suggest, um, because we certainly heard a lot last week also, but if, if you could maybe keep track of the questions, I'm a big fan of FAQs and I, I think we need to have clearly written responses to all of these questions. And, and again, the one that we still don't have a clear answer to, even for us-
Right.
Is what's the financial impact of this. So, if we could make sure that that, I mean, that happens as soon as possible.
We sure will. Next person want to come up and speak? If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is John Sheedy. I live at 4110 South Second Street in Springfield, but it's really Woodside Township. I've lived there with my wife for 57 years. And you're asking us to, to come into the city to help you out. I've heard denied them to police chief that you can't get policemen to service the people in the city. And you're talking about 1.4 million deduction in the fire department and you want to protect us, uh, for fire. Alderman McMenon said, if we get these people in, we'll have that much more money for the streets. I would say you need a lot of money for the streets.
Yeah, we do.
In the Springfield. What are the people paying now in the city of Springfield for the streets? You certainly can't speed down Sixth Street or Fifth Street or Ninth Street because of the conditions of the street. And you want to annex 160 people so we can come fix your streets. McMenon said, you've got a parcel out on West that's 15 acres to the guys burning leaves. Why don't you annex him and leave us alone? That's all I can say.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Alderman Hannah?
Last week I asked a question. I'm going to ask it right now. How many people out here for, are, are here for, um, annexation that are, that are actually here because of annexation?
Don't think it?
Yeah, well, they're just, just are here to, because of it.
Because of the issue.
Okay, how many of you people, who, who out there wants their property to come in? You want your property to come in?
We're going to have to sign an annexation agreement anyway because we're developing on an empty water pit.
There you go.
You want any water?
Got one.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'd ask, if you would-
I'm in like sewer, 500 feet away, so I can't get it, apparently.
If you'd come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. Are the ones that, the gentleman in red here. Yep, yep. We'll just go in order if you would, please.
My name's Dennis Adams. I have one of the properties off Spalding Orchard Road, uh, six acres. And I've lived there for 30 years and have done fine without needing city utilities or city services. But I'm fine to sign on for the annexation if you guys will sign on and guarantee me my taxes aren't going to go up.
Right.
It's a deal.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Alderman McMinim.
You know, just as far as taking polls and what people believe and what they think. So, we've got a lot of folks here that are against this annexation, but I can assure you that in Ward Seven, if I took a poll among the, um, 5,000 voters in Ward Seven and I asked them, should we annex the holes in the donut? It'd be 60, 70, 80, 90% yes because everyone thinks that those that are surrounded by the city or nearly surrounded by the city should comply with the same rules that they're complying with and provide for the same taxation that they're providing for. So, I just wanted to give that out there to understand how I'm going to vote for this because my constituents believe we should annex the holes in the donut.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, uh, Ward Three has had annexations in the past. Be different if no one has ever been annexed before. But, uh, I just think this council really needs to think about, um, the fact that the city's going to grow and is going to continue to grow. And it is tough when we have to make those decisions, but I would have the majority of my constituents saying, you know, get rid of the holes in the donuts as well. Thank you.
Uh, Director Bottom has something to add?
Well, I just wanted to mention the, the last gentleman that spoke, Fifth, Sixth and Ninth Street are all state routes this time, but they do have plans to improve those. Uh, and I believe Fifth Street and FY22 and then Sixth Street and FY23.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Either way, you know, if you want to be annexed or not annexed in, I think the majority is not. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Jonathan McKeon. I'm here in behalf of Springfield Faith Mission, 1955 Brunz Lane and 1957 Brunz Lane. Not much of a public speaker, so bear with me. I think most of this stuff's already been talked about, about the burning leaves and sticks. I'm not close to anybody. There's fields on like almost all the sides of me, so it's not going to affect. Um, we have animals such as chickens and ducks and geese and et cetera. Um, also about the water and sewer, you know, what was going to happen about that if we get annexed. And we heard tonight that the police are stretched thin already, Springfield Police Department. And I think that's pretty much all I could think of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Curry and I'm here supporting several friends that have properties with horses, agriculture. Um, and my fear is, I understand the holes in the donut and I welcome you to come to these particular properties, inspect them. They're well-kept. The houses are well-kept. There's no eyesores. Because we care about the welfare of our neighbors, we also care about the welfare of our animals. We can't have junk laying around. And welcome, come out and look. My fear for my friends, and I keep some of my horses at one particular property, my fear is that if we are sucked into the city, well, first of all, these properties both have always been equine facilities for, I can't tell you, Abraham Lincoln, you know, slept in one of the bedrooms. It's been around a while and we've been doing great. I think it's important for these families to be able to maintain their livelihoods. Should they be sucked into the city, they would not be able to, and the taxes go the way I believe they would, they would not be able to afford the very lifestyle that they have desired to do. Because owning horses, owning farm equipment, owning property is very expensive, as you know. And the taxes, I think it's, it's disgusting to think that a handful of people are going to solve the city's problems as far as financing our roads and fire protection. I know, I agree there's problems, but there's no way 130 or 160 properties are going to make up for that deficit. I believe that if you do need to, to close in the holes of the, in the donut, I don't know if you can, I don't necessarily think handpicking is, but there are certain livelihoods that you're going to destroy. And I, I, it's, it sickens me. And I just would beg that you take into consideration your area and your area. And I understand if they're right in the city, yeah, but you're, you're fighting because you want these properties to be improved. You want them to clean up their yards. You want them to be respectful of their neighbors and represent the neighborhood for the betterment. I guarantee you, these farms are, are run by Americans that take pride in what they do and want to continue to do what they are doing. And they, I, I beg you to consider certain properties and what you'll be doing to these families and is, and their freedom to live a lifestyle that they have worked hard to achieve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that's something we'll have to take a look at. I, all I could speak, uh, from where I'm at, there is a silo where, you know, there's houses all around them. They have a pumpkin patch and they've been operating that for 30-plus years. And so, even though it's a housing residential, it continues in that fashion because it's, again, it's grandfathered in and, uh, you continue to operate as such. But, uh, you know, that is a concern with regards to livelihoods. We'll, uh, check and run the numbers and see what the impact is.
Hi, my name is Tricia Hillman. Uh, I just purchased a property off of North Brunz Lane. It is yet unaddressed because it's in the county and 911 doesn't want to talk to me until I have my building permit. But, um, in the process of buying what is essentially a parcel meant to own, have a house on it, that has never had a house on it in 30 years, um, it was a shock to get a letter that said I'm being annexed for a lot that is literally just a piece of grass that has no services on it already. Now, we, we purchased this knowing that we would probably end up with an annexation agreement so that we could get city water because it's too small for a well. And all the neighbors around us are well-established and have septic. They have their own water. They're fine. They, they're probably not on my side as far as, um, annexing. But I'm not afraid of taxes. I worked for revenue for years. My family is from Edwardsville, which has one of the highest, most horrible property tax rates I've ever seen. So, I'm not scared of property tax, but I should be, but I'm going to have a half acre with a manufactured house on it. My property tax is going to be 400 bucks. I mean, I don't, I don't have the equity or the livelihood that you do. I have a different situation.
Exactly.
I'm probably your ideal candidate to, you know, have here on your behalf to say yes. However, um, to receive a letter that says, show up to this meeting and we're going to annex you, call this guy, um, and he'll answer your questions. Mr. Lowe was very professional, but he couldn't tell me a damn thing. He couldn't tell me if I would get sewer now, even though I'm two miles from the septic sewer plant. I'm going to have to put in septic, um, because you can't run it that far, apparently. Uh, they're selling commercial property, uh, half a block over, but I don't know how they're going to handle their sewer. I guess they're going to pay. Um, not to know why I was being annexed, couldn't tell me, well, you're going to get 911 service. Okay, well, I'm literally off of veterans. Of course I'm going to get 911. They're going to plow your street. Well, I went by there on North Brunz and they didn't all the times it snowed because I go by and monitor the property to see what the conditions will be like. The road, the road is not paved around the airport. That's fine. I understand it because I chose it because it was near the airport. I've always lived near airports. They find that they're patrolled, they're low crime. They find that they're patrolled, they're low crime, people don't fool around with fireworks and burning things. It's a half acre. But I will say that if you're going to continue doing this in the future, this is unacceptable. I have read on your website that there is a list of things that the Public Works is supposed to get, that they're supposed to address before this kind of thing. And when I called and asked for that list, to see praying that I didn't have to put a septic system in, nobody could tell me. What services am I gonna get? You're talking about roads, am I gonna get new roads? Do you even know if they're gonna, are we doing anything on Brunson? I mean, it's like a hundred feet long, but are you really gonna be doing those things? I would like to know what the plans were, because supposedly there is a list of things that Public Works has decided are beneficial. We should know. That should be with this letter at the bare minimum. Just a little respect before you take our tax money. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Gleeby. I live on Koki Mill Road in the county. I've been there for over thirty years. The city has moved around us, so I think we're all tired of being called holes in the donut when maybe the city is the hole in the donut. And as far as burning, a doctor's office built right across from me, I can burn. I'm in the county, they're in the city, but guess what? I had a little fire of gumballs I was burning. They called the fire department. So here come the fire department, guys get out with their big hoses and squirt my little thing of gumballs, kick it around. And I said, I'm in the county, I can burn. They said, we know you can. But we had a complaint across the street because that was an allergy doctor and somebody smelled some smoke. And so it doesn't make any difference whether you live in the county, if they get a complaint about you burning, they'll come put your fire out. Honestly. So I think we're kinda tired of the city moving around us. There's so many empty buildings in the city of Springfield that these businesses could fill, but they wanna come west and they wanna build. They wanna build out there, but they don't wanna put out, up with horses and stuff like that, which I have horses. So what's the answer? We'd like to be left alone. And I don't know what the answer is for you guys, but we're perfectly happy in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council on this matter? Any other discussion with the council?
I want you to close the public meeting.
Been moved to close the public meeting? All in favor? Or is there a second?
Second, aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We'll reconvene the regular city council meeting with regards to ordinance number, just a second, please. Twenty twenty-one dash zero nine through through twenty twenty-one dash one zero two. It's been moved to, was there a motion? Alderman Conley?
Yes. I move to, I guess, dismiss these ordinances, withdraw these ordinances.
To either send back to committee, approve, or deny?
I move to deny all these ordinances, anonymous vote.
This is point of order. If the motions do deny, it takes, it takes a, could you explain that mo, that process?
Whatever, I just, let's move these so that we get a vote on them. How about that?
Final passage, that's what.
Motion, motion for final, final passage. How's that? Thank you.
Final passage to deny, correct?
To adopt.
Yeah, to, try to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my motion back and let Alderman Redpath go ahead and do this for me.
I'd like to make a motion that we send these on for approval.
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved for approval and second, any discussion? All those in favor, the motion and a yes vote means that you are in favor of the annexation, correct? No vote means you're against the annexation.
That's correct.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to annex, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
Alderman or Ed Path?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
No.
Alderman Proctor?
No.
Alderman McMiniman?
Yes.
Alderman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hannah?
No.
You said six noes and three yays, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. We appreciate the feedback, and we will take notes and make those part of the minutes.
Mayor, real quick, I did meet a lot of nice people, even though they were not very happy, but they were, I met some pretty cool people through this, so.
Thank you very much.
You guys, thanks for coming.
Judge Holmes.
Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-one dash one zero four, an ordinance reappointing Roger W. Holmes as Inspector General for the city of Springfield. Carolyn attended a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-one dash one zero four on final passage.
Mayor, Mr. Motion for Discussion?
Second.
Been moved in second for discussion, Alderman McMiniman.
This was, I think, this ordinance or the other ordinance for Judge Holmes having to do with him being a judge on the municipal court came up about a year ago. And one of the aldermen here said, you know, maybe Judge Holmes has gotta decide which one of these he wants to do. Does he wanna be Inspector General or does he wanna be a judge at municipal court for reasons I won't, it's a problem when they got two contracts like this for various reasons. And so I recommend that maybe, Mayor, you could hold this and have a discussion with Judge Holmes and ask him which of the two appointments he would like to have, either Inspector General or a judge at municipal court, which mostly handles housing issues. And so that's the reason for a motion for discussion. If we just don't take a vote on this, you can have a conversation with Judge Holmes and give us some feedback.
That's okay with the administration, if it's okay with the council or corporal council? I don't have an issue with that. Is that okay? So it'd be, we would just hold it in committee for the time being?
Yeah, it's nothing, I don't.
Yeah, nothing against Judge Holmes.
Right, Judge has done a good job.
Absolutely nothing against Judge Holmes.
But my question, I guess, is, and I understand the perception of this, but is it, they don't, he doesn't have too much to do where each one interferes with the other job, is there?
No, Corporal Council can explain it. We do have an alternate person.
Yeah, we have Judge Milik, right?
You may remember that, just very briefly, Judge Holmes is a retired circuit judge. He's very, I would say, very careful about potential conflicts or appearance of conflicts. There's a alternate Inspector General in the event that Mr., that Judge Holmes feels that there's any kind of a conflict, and he has referred, I would just mention to you, three or four items to the other, the alternate Inspector General because of the issue of conflict. He has, I think, been very meticulous on making sure that the administrative court process does not cross over or interfere with the process of Inspector General. That being said, we, there's certainly no problem with talking with him about both issues, about is there a conflict, should we be considering having him choose one or the other? So there's certainly no problem, you know, talking to him about it. If that's the pleasure of the council.
Yep.
Do you, do you wanna hold this till the next meeting?
Yeah. Hold it for two weeks?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We'll hold it for two weeks. Carolyn attended a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one four eight, an ordinance amending Chapter Seventy-Six, Section seventy-six point four-four of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the empowerment of vehicles due to fleeing and eluding.
So move second?
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Is this for emergency?
No, it's just being added to the agenda.
Yeah, it's added to the agenda. So it'll be at the next committee, it's a whole Tuesday discussed, and then hopefully final passage, the next city council meeting. Is there any unfinished business coming forward to city council? Any new business?
Sorry, Mayor, I had unfinished business.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions related to the Economic Development Office. It's my understanding is, Mayor, are you taking all questions dealing with that issue now?
Taking questions, sure.
Okay, so a couple of things. What's the status of the Ferguson Building?
The Ferguson Building, we did get an email, I believe, today with an update. They're hoping to have their financial package in place with regards to the bank or the banks by the end of this month.
Okay, will we get an update when that goes through?
Yes.
Okay. And then, well, I mean, I'm just gonna point out, we haven't gotten an OBM report for some time now to ask questions about it. I don't know if anyone else has noticed, I thought we usually got that for this meeting.
I think it'll be the next one, but Director McCarthy, is he here?
He was. So I guess, Mayor, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna call the elephant in the room. You fired the director of our Economic Development Office. What is this new direction we're heading in with economic development? I mean, we're looking at potential for tens of millions of dollars coming in from the federal government. I understand there are very, you know, all sorts of requirements attached to how that's spent. I have no idea what our plan is. I've had, I will tell you, while the annexation issue brought a lot of phone calls and emails and contacts, that is nothing compared to the response I got from people in this community who are very upset about the way Valiezel was treated. I think it was entirely disrespectful, and it's your choice, it's your decision, you're allowed to have your direction, but I would like to know, what is this new direction we're taking with economic development?
Well, with regards to the American Cares Act dollars, nobody knows the guidelines as of yet. We had a call with Senator Durbin, actually, I'll be a part of a U.S. Conference of Mayor's Call later this week, I believe, with the White House, and they're working on the guidelines, and it's through the Department of Treasury, not HUD. And so that will, just like all funds, come through the Office of Public, or Office of Budget and Management. So it'll be under the guise of Director McCarthy, and he's essentially oversees all our funds. So with regards to crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, that's part of it. With regards to infrastructure, I think right now, the initial reports are it's for water, sewer, and broadband. As far as outside of that, remains to be seen. I know there can be revenue reimbursement. If the cities had lost revenue with regards to sales tax, anything of that nature, that would qualify, talking about police or fire or any public employees that could have lost their job or potentially lose their job. It's my understanding that dollars could be utilized for that as well. So we don't know the definitive answer as well as the definitive amount that we will receive. But again, that's all going to be, you know, go through the Office of Budget Management and meet all those protocols with regards to the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The economic development direction is, you know, I think people who've sat around here, my highest priority is the inner city as much as possible. When you're talking about the American Rescue Plan, that's the focus. When you talk about the CARES Act plan, that was the focus. I mean, that's where, if you had PPP, you could do that or anything related to the pandemic. And so that's how we're looking at it, how do we come out of it post-pandemic? It's, you know, as far as what's transpired in the media, with regards to discussions, it's a personnel issue. As you said, you know, it's an at-will person, just like Director McCarthy is or any of my directors as far as that goes, but we're just, you know, I thought the change was needed at that point in time, and we're moving on from there.
Well, I, Mayor, I'd like to point out, first of all, I want to tell you some of the comments I heard from businesses in Ward Eight. People talked about, especially small businesses, how Director Yezel reached out to them, was supportive through the pandemic. We just went through one of the most devastating economic times our community has seen in a very long time, and I heard nothing but praise for her support, her respect, and her understanding, and then giving, giving our businesses, especially the smaller businesses, the tools they needed to, to get through this, this last spring and summer, to get through that process without being hurt so deeply. So I guess, you know, we're talking about expanding our city by, you wanna bring in all these, these properties with people who don't really wanna be part of the city yet. I don't really have a problem with annexations at all. I think we should be doing that in the proper manner. But if you really wanna grow this city and we wanna develop this city, our economic engine has to be a priority. And we now have no one in there, and you've not told us you've got, do you have another person in there to lead this new, new direction? Absolutely. Eastside Development has to be a part of this. It absolutely has to. But I will also say, for my businesses in Ward Eight, I wanna know that both the owners who live in Ward Eight and the businesses that are located there are gonna be supported and put in a position where we can come out of this pandemic, which has not left us yet, in a stronger place. And that's gonna take someone, Mayor, that's gonna take a full-time person, and it's gonna take someone with the background and experience to bring in people, to bring in contracts. We still haven't seen the Legacy Point contract. I mean, I don't know where that development's going, you know? It's, Mayor, I'm just, I just want you to, no, I'm not done. I'm sorry, I'm really disappointed in the way that, I haven't seen Legacy Point. I thought we were gonna have something from that this week, and we haven't. You know, when this, when these big projects keep getting put back and put off, and we're talking about cuts to our budgets, and we're talking about, you know, making reductions to our budget, we will only grow in this city if we have a growth mindset, and we need someone directing economic development. So I would really hope that you take another look at this new direction you're taking so that we ensure that we have someone in the city as dedicated and qualified as Valiezel was to move us past this, this position. Because it's, it is disappointing, and I think you've done the city a disservice.
Well, I know you have a close, close personal relationship.
No, I don't have a close personal relationship, Mayor. I have a close personal relationship.
I listen to you.
I'm sorry. Mayor, the businesses.
Right, are you gonna pay me the respect? I mean, that's what you're talking about is respect.
Then could you not make an assumption about why I'm saying things? I'm telling you what I'm hearing from my constituents.
Let's talk about economic development, shall we?
Yes.
I was the one that went to the legislature and got the downtown TIF extended. I was the one. We're the only city that got a double extension to downtown TIF. You know what that meant? That meant the thirty million dollar YMCA project that was built during the pandemic. That meant the Chamber of Commerce over there at the center of 501. That meant the Bicentennial Plaza. None of those projects would not have happened except for my leadership in going over to the State House.
And I appreciate that, Mayor.
And I was told by the state representatives, not Sushir, she helped in that endeavor, but I was told, why are we doing this? This, this isn't gonna happen. And I said, why, where would we be as leaders if we felt that way? Now, it wasn't me that tried to not have an economic development director. You weren't on the council at that point in time when I brought Valiezel in, and it's not, I'm not gonna make this personal. I know other people want me to make it personal. It is not personal. I gave her the contract with regards to economic development, and I appointed her the director. The council tried to defund the position. Just this past year, we tried to dismantle the department. So if the council's looking at dismantling the department, I cannot, you know, it's mixed, mixed. It's. I gave her the contract with regards to economic development, and I appointed her the director. The council tried to defund the position. Just this past year, we tried to dismantle the department. So if the council's looking at dismantling the department.
Mayor, we really got fixed.
We need to talk about this.
Just in case you wondered what he sounded like, Mayor.
If I, Mayor, and I apologize, I shouldn't have interrupted you. I do just wanna say, since we're not making this personal, I was not speaking from a personal relationship, but from, really, I mean, you could not have blown my phone up more. I don't know what you could have done that would have blown my phone up more. I heard from so many people who just appreciated what she'd done, and these are constituents who live in Ward Eight but have businesses outside of Ward Eight and businesses in Ward Eight, and then some people who don't live in Ward Eight. But I want you to know, I'm not asking this from any personal relationship, I'm asking from a very professional concern for the economic development of our community. Also, I think Valiezel's a good person.
I take economic development to the heart, that's why I made the change, and that's the direction we plan on going. We do have an individual that will be starting, but in answer to your question, if that was the most asked question, who's coming in, taking her place? Nobody right now. What we are doing is reassessing where we're at and moving in that direction with regards to outreach.
I think we've been played out of the stage, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't know what's happening here. Yeah, I don't know what's happening here. Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think we all have to respect your position as mayor, because you're entitled to create the team that you believe best fits your role as mayor and so forth, and I think we've got to respect that. And no one's entitled to be a director. They serve at the pleasure of the mayor. They're part of the mayor's team. And I've seen other directors come and go, but when other directors have left, they didn't hire a public relations firm or refer to council. At-will employees, you know, they serve at the pleasure. It's just part of the terrain, and it can be tough for someone to leave. But I think the best answer when someone, first of all, they could have kept it quiet because I think you asked for a resignation letter.
Right.
And none of that had to come public. None of it had to become public. And you weren't the first one to issue a press release. I think the individual we're talking about did that before even the council members knew anything had happened. At least, that's the way it occurred to me. I saw an announcement that a press, a public relations firm issued something. I think we just got to move beyond this and respect, you've got the role to build your team, and then our role is to give you advice and counsel once that person is presented to us for acceptance or not. And usually, directors, when they leave, they say, you know, it's been an honor to serve the city for so many years, and I appreciate the opportunity to have done so. And that's, I think, what a lot of constituents want to hear. I took maybe two or three phone calls, two or three emails, and basically, they wanted to know what, what's the inside story. Well, the inside story is that the mayor gets to choose whoever he wants to be for a director, subject to advice and counsel of the city council with a vote, and that's the way it goes.
Alderman Conley, then Alderman Gregory, and then Alderman Proctor.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, that was kind of my point. I want to know what the direction is. I want to know what the plans are. We have a lot of small businesses who are looking at what happened to them in the last year, looking at the hit that they've taken, and wondering how they're going to be planning, what the city is going to be doing to support them moving forward. And that was my question. I mean, I don't understand why it happened. That's your business. But what I really don't understand is, what's the plan? Because I'm a planner. I would like to know, the Office of Planning and Economic Development, two critical things we need right now. So when we're talking about post-pandemic and this new, this new thing that we're going to be doing, I just would like to know more than, you know, it happened and we're going to reassess. I mean, what's the direction? If you get rid of somebody, what is the direction we're looking for? Mayor, I'd like to know what your vision is.
Do you know what the plan was prior to this?
No, no, I'm asking you what your vision is.
No, I'm asking you a question. Do you know what the plan was prior to this?
Mayor, I really have a hard time figuring out what your plans are. I'm sorry.
Well.
I don't hear from you very often.
Well, you know, they call this, everything we have here is a cell phone, it works both ways.
Yes, it does.
With regards to that, so really, what it comes down to is the emphasis, for me, will be the inner city development. And I don't pay attention to boundaries. It doesn't matter if it's Ward Six, Ward Ten, Ward Nine, Ward Two, whatever the ward it is, I don't look at the boundaries. What I look at is, how can we improve the lives of the individuals we serve?
Absolutely.
So what we've done, just so you understand the vision, what we've done with our utility has gone from five days of cash to fortify the fiduciary responsibility we have so we can use the CWLP as an economic driver. And how you use it as an economic driver is use the rate, economic rate, to drive development in the underdeveloped areas.
So are we going to?
That's an asset that we have as a community that we have not used. You know the last time that was used?
I don't. And actually, does that mean you're going to be lowering the business?
I think it was under a previous Mayor Langfelter. So that's what our intent is. Broadband development over on the east side, they needed help, and I got bashed for helping them with hotspots. Schoolchildren that needed the help. You don't, during a pandemic, you have to act. You do not have time to wait and be drugged down by the bureaucracy, but I got backlash for it. But I would make that decision all over again to provide the hotspots in partnership with School District 186 for the families that needed it. And it wasn't just Ward Two or Three, it was people that met the income guidelines with community development block grant funds. So that's the type of development. With regards to the real elephant in the room, different color, not white, NAACP, the back in school program, you realize, these are students that were expelled from School District 186, and we are losing our children to the streets. And we, I made the decision when this council did not take the advice of our Economic Development Commission experts. They're in banking, they're in real estate, they provided the yes vote. You should support this initiative. What did the council do? No. During a pandemic, when they have probably 25 low-income students that have been expelled to school, they want to put them back in the classroom. That's where they needed to be. And unfortunately, I, you know, that's where this other ordinance is coming from, because I know people aren't happy. I'd do that decision all over again, because it was the right move to make, to get the kids out of their house, back into school, so the NAACP back in school program can help them and not lose them to the streets. And so that's the direction. We have gun violence happening right now. You think we're getting a lot of money? You know who's getting a lot of money? School District 186. And there's other entities. Nate Bottom and I, we've met with the sanitary district. How can we leverage our funds so we can take care of the EPA issue we have at North Gate? We can take care of the sewers around the lake, our only water source, to protect it. But with regards to 186, they're getting probably three times the amount we are. But we should look at a way to leverage those dollars. It's not one entity, it's how we can partner together. That's why it was important for us to partner with the park district and the school district with the hotspots, leveraging our funds and our resources to help the people we serve. I don't have the luxury like the mayor of Chicago, where they oversee the schools. I'm not sure about the parks. But we have to work in unison to maximize our resources, so it doesn't matter where you live, you can enjoy the resources that the city can bear. It's just not the city of Springfield, government in general. Too many times, we're drugged down on bureaucracy, and it's a silo approach. I'm not about that. I'm about, how do we work together to maximize our resources we have? And we have this rare opportunity to, right now, to bring the University of Illinois, Springfield to downtown, or SIU, whatever the case may be. And we should be doing everything, and the one thing, the resource, going back to CWLP, we're going to use our broadband, our fiber network to make that happen. We're building that out to 40 gig capacity. That's the economic driver of the future, and we know that from telemedicine to teleeducation, remote learning, and moving in that direction. So we need to build out our infrastructure as much as possible, and those are just some of the items. But really, what it comes down to is outreach. I think that's what you're trying to point out. Val was well-respected, that's why I hired her. She was involved with Local First, Chamber of Commerce, we had a relationship for a long period of time. My wife got her wedding dress at her shop. So you think that's what's easy for me? No, it's never easy for me with regards to that. But I have to look at the direction, because when we come to this council, I don't see people calling up the director, I don't see you questioning the director or the chief. It all points to my chair because I have the ultimate responsibility. And so that's why I take very seriously, and that's why I decided to go a new direction and move in that direction. And really, the proof is going to be in the pudding. It doesn't matter what I say today, the proof is going to be like the downtown TIF, second renewal. No other city was able to get it done. I got it done with corporate council. We went over the legislature and made that happen, working with the legislature. But that's what it will take to move our city finally to the point that we all want. We all strive for these initiatives for a long period of time. We have this rare opportunity of window with the American Rescue Plan to have these resources coming to the city of Springfield. We do, we cannot delay. We need to hit the ground running, maximize our investment. That's why we need to realign our fire stations. And the budget, I put in there, three fire stations. You know why? To protect the public. I didn't care what it cost. And that's what we have to do. And we'll see if we get the American Rescue dollars, or there's going to be other grant dollars available to make this happen. But we have to get these projects shovel-ready, ready to go, so we can better serve our public.
So I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a question, because you said you want to use CWLP as an economic development tool. Does that mean we're going to look at reconfiguring the rates that we charge businesses?
Yes, that would be a real possibility.
When would that conversation be starting, do you know? Because I know that would absolutely be something that would be top of a lot of businesses' interest.
Yeah, we will have that discussion this year.
Wonderful.
That's what the intent is. But again, you know, they have their own challenges with regards to Dolman 33, we're taking 31, 32 off, the solar. Really, what it comes down to is what the right structure is, and how do you make that happen? But again, I don't want any pushback from these, you know, what's great about the, this structure of government, what's great about it is the engagement with the public. You know, they feel free to call each city council member. That's what it's all about. Sometimes what drags us down is not looking at the city as a whole, what's needed, because one area needs it better than others. And I'll use Portillo's as an example. I want to, I put a rendering down on the Y Block, actually, because I thought they could bring activity downtown. Or I put it, better yet, Days Inn property on Stevenson Drive. They wouldn't go there. And the reason being is, they look at the rooftops. And so that's what we're, you know, that's just the reality of development. And so, you know, that's the frustration, but we need to concentrate those resources. But I will announce one thing that's been a blessing for me as a mayor, is through the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Bloomberg Harvard Initiative, they really showed that we're not alone as a city, you know, with our struggles with regards to, you try to hold it together from divisiveness. I put Springfield City Council and our residents against any community with regards to keeping that unified front, so to speak, not the divisiveness that we've seen around the country and around our state. But the other part of that is, with the Bloomberg Harvard Initiative, they, you know, showed that we're not alone, and how we're doing better, and the challenges we all share, it doesn't matter if you live in Springfield, Illinois, or someplace in California, or New York, wherever the case may be, or the Texas, I don't want to miss any particular state. But the one thing that we did receive word on this week was the Harvard Fellowship. We're going to have a person coming here from Harvard, they're a master graduate, and they're going to come here and look at our demolition and our housing process, because our dilapidated housing. How can we, they're going to come in and assess where we're at and really analyze it, so hopefully provide better processes for us. Because what we want to do, and you've been an advocate for this, is with regards to preserving our housing, fixing it up as much as possible. But sometimes you have to assess where we're at to move forward in that positive manner. And we are getting, you know, free of charge with regards to that expertise coming in to helping with that particular initiative. Yeah, Alderman Gregory, and then Alderman Proctor.
I just want to say, you know, this, of course, her departure was, Director Yezel's departure was a, you know, news to everyone. It was news to me as well. But after that was done, I mean, you know, my mindset, and, you know, I know the east side comes up a lot as far as, because we are pushing, but that stance is not going to change with the mayor now that he's over, and when he hires whoever he's hiring, you know, I'm going to be very aggressive in trying to get things done on the east side. I think it's time. Over the last 12 years, I can go back over several things, even, you know, on up to a state level, as far as funding for Ward Two. I'm speaking for Ward Two. A lot of times, we get the whole east side with this Ward Two and Three things. You know, Ward Two, Ward Three has seen some success, but, you know, in Ward Two, we are in desperate need of a whole lot of things. You know, I work with Deputy Director Harris and Nate Bottom well, but, and they do a great job, but we still have some instances, and it's nothing to them, but that we can't get to quick enough. That was a great point with the houses. When I first came in, I was a tear-down, you know, bad houses, because they looked terrible. But when I rode by, it's funny that this conversation come up, but when I rode out in the community today, I was looking at four and five lots, just nothing, grass, trash, this, that, you know, so I'm scratching my head and saying, you know, is this a good process of tearing down all these houses? Some of them are a headache, and some of them are a real nuisance. But we're caught in such a hard place. You know, I got houses, plenty of them, burned down, hole in the roof, da-da-da. And we got to go through several things to get it, I get it, but it looks terrible, terrible. I get up every day at 5:30 in the morning, so that's why I'm on it like that. I email and call everybody, I don't know how many stinking emails I'd have sent, about just fly dumping alone since I've been here. It's in the hundreds for sure. So, you know, that's why I'm pressing so hard, and I'm going to press with him and press with whoever he hires, and I think that's the mindset as a council. The key word that I heard him say in all these interviews, and me and Mr. Donald had a great conversation, but the key word that I heard him say in his interviews, and I'm going to hold him to it, is, you know, he's trying to get some things done faster. So I looked at, and that's what I want, I want some things done faster from everything with our, with every department in our city. I think we got to find ways to be more efficient, especially in the community that I am representing. This city has great potential. It has great history. But we never going to reach it into all sides of this city, it's really thriving, and, you know, Ward Three has its improvements needed, but this ward that I'm representing is suffering. So I'm happy to work with many of the businesses that have really connected with us. Property owners have called me who own vacant lots, they're really working. Alderman McCully, the gentleman you introduced me to, he's been wonderful. We're working on things. So I just don't want anybody to mistake my aggressiveness for my community as being greedy or anything like that, because it is not. I'm just trying to do what the people are asking me to do. And, you know, sometimes I go through this little thing, am I doing too much, am I asking for too much? You know, and as I ride every day in my community, I'm not. I'm probably not asking for enough. So I apologize if it looks that way to my other council members. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Proctor, then Alderman Conley.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to clarify a point. You mentioned that we filed ordinances to dismantle Opit. I just want to clarify that it wasn't meant to dismantle Opit, it was meant to restructure it, much what you're probably proposing to do now. But I just want to make it very clear, they had nothing, absolutely nothing to do with Vallesel's performance or her job. I thought she did a great job. Had absolutely nothing to do with that. And, you know, I think why it was done was just because of, out of frustration, and as an Alderman, I try to take the tools that I can to alleviate that frustration through, you know, whatever means necessary. And one of it is just working together and communication. So, you know, I think we need to do this more often, poke you, because we got more out of you here right now than about what you want to do for the city, which I think is great stuff, that I've heard in the last six years, to be honest with you. And everything you said is great. I think it's going to be great for the city and great to do, but we just don't know it. We just don't, don't. So when Ferguson Booth Building came back, you know, last fall, I had no idea what it was about. Nothing, zero. And it was frustrating, you know? And so it's just, you know, when we were first elected six years ago, or seven years ago now, however it was, you called, you reached out to me and asked if I wanted to go to IDOT with you for a meeting to talk about the rail. I couldn't do it because of work, you know, conflict and stuff. But I appreciate the, you know, the call and the request to go with you and work on an issue together. You know, those are great, but it seemed to have stopped. So just want to get back to where we were six years ago, I guess.
Yep. Good advice, thank you. Alderman Conley.
It's okay, I just wanted to let Alderman Gregory know I didn't think he was pushing too much.
So any other unfinished business? Any new business? We do have a settlers' day, actually, the day of first settlers in Springfield coming up April 10th, and we're doing a tree giveaway at Lincoln Hernan Law Office, I think, right outside their 200 trees. I think, right outside there, 200 trees. And I think we're going to repeat that on Awareness Day, too. And actually, we're hoping to make that an annual event, uh, so we can catch up with the Ash Board and move forward in that direction. And I think, uh, word went out that we did receive our, uh, Tree City designation, thanks to, uh, Jeffrey Ream and the Forestry Commission, and Nate Bottom and Public Works, and, uh, begging that happen. But, you know, again, we need to replenish the trees that we've lost and continue in that process. And then also encourage anybody that would like to do cleanup that day, contact Public Works. We have best and appropriate, uh, supplies, uh, available. And that number is 789-2255. Any other new business? Alderman McMinim.
Well, we have an election today. I hope, uh, I hope that the winners are happy winning, and the losers try again. It's, uh, that's the way life is.
Actually, Joe, it was yesterday. We've been here that long.
We do have, uh, two individuals sta, uh, sign up to speak. Sam Arnold, I believe, or who is Sam Arnold, and-
Sam Arnold, Don Felton, and Rick Zion.
Aldermen. You know, the last time I was here, I challenged each and every one of yous to come out to the house there and look. Now-
Should be all right.
There, there was only two people that showed up. And one of them, I didn't even realize he was showing up, and that was the mayor. The mayor come out and looked at the house. I give him great applause for doing that, because he took and come out, looked, and seen all the damages. And he told me what he was going to do. And I thank you. And, Mr. Bottoms, I have to apologize to you, because I told you I was going to send you those estimates. Those estimates were wrong. They was just for waterproofing only, and not for the foundation problem. But I have a gentleman here that will speak with yous and tell yous that exactly the same thing that the Union Pacific Railroad engineer said to me over the phone. On this date, it is 1% impossible to give anything close to an accurate estimate on foundation repair or replacement of foundations. There should have been a retaining wall in place before any of this construction even started. And now, when you was out there, you seen part of the house tilting off toward the hill. And it was raining in the house. Am I correct?
I was close. I'd have to leave that up to the experts.
Well, you almost had to have an umbrella inside the house there, okay? And, anyway, I, I'd like for the rest of the Aldermen's and Alderwomen's, okay, to come out and take a look, just like the mayor did. And you take a good judge of character of what we've been living in, and what we're still living in, okay, which is, we don't have a kitchen. We're lucky to even have a bathroom right now. Because I had the higher earth guy come in, tear up the basement floor to get to the sewer line, because the sewer line has collapsed, or there's something wrong with it, or it come apart because of all the vibrations, okay? Ricky Ray Sewer's coming out first thing in the morning, okay? And he's going to tie, cut into it and run his, uh, little viewer down it, you know? And then he's going to give his opinion of what's going on. Now, I understand Hanson Engineering is part of the city, because it's part of the railroad project. But we need an independent engineer from the city who's not working for the city, because that'd be a conflict. So I ask, Mr. Mayor, that the city pay for the independent engineer to come out, okay? So we can get this house restabilized and the foundation up underneath it.
Yeah, if you could, uh, get the estimates of the work, I think that's what Director Bottom was waiting on with regards to the repair work and getting that information. Because what it's going to come down to is, uh, either paying for the repair, or if it makes more sense to purchase the property, that's what we're trying to assess.
Well, Mr. Felton will speak a little bit more.
My, uh, 32 years of doing foundation work, waterproofing, uh, on the owner of Sure Dry Waterproofing, uh, taking a look at that property, and given the fact that the railroad, whoever dug that near this gentleman's home, you are literally four foot from his property line. Your own city telephone poles and light structures are leaning almost to a 45-degree angle because of the lack of the responsibility. Whoever's in charge of stabilize that property before conducting whatever they did, in my professional opinion, after viewing this property, I don't believe that that property will ever be stable enough or be able to be repaired. I believe that if you took a measurement right now, or a wedge on one end of that house, and four days later, after we have this rain, because there's still nothing been done to stabilize that property, there's going to be a difference in the next three days on that property moving from where it is as we speak right here. And that's specifically, just from my experience of, uh, doing this type of work for, uh, this amount of time. Uh, I was mind-boggled to pull up to that property and see the construction that had taken place, with not even so much as any type of a retaining wall to protect this property whatsoever. I, I feel it's total neglect on whoever was responsible for, uh, what's happened there. I mean, it's, I, I, I've just never seen such irresponsible, uh, decision-making in all my years of, uh, doing foundation work.
Yeah. Mr. Arnold, if you, two questions. One, if you could give, uh, we'd like to know who you talked to at Union Pacific. You don't have to, you can give it to Nate later, but there's the house in back. Is that being used? You know, that house with the ramp? Is that being used currently?
Yes, that's a rental house.
Okay. Alderman Hanauer.
So, so didn't we offer to purchase this property, or have we, have we offered that, Mayor? Or what, what's the story? I don't-
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, you offered to purchase property for $43,000. Then you come back and said something about, what, $52,000?
$55,000, based upon assessed value. However, I talked to the owner today, Gina Slary, she requested that we give an appraisal. She thinks it's worth more. So, I talked to her about 5 o'clock, and she said that, um-
Well-
Go ahead and, oh, excuse me.
And you're not, you're not the owner, sir, right?
I'm the representative of the owners.
Well, let's-
Alderman Hanauer.
Again-
Because it's my sis-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's my sister and my niece.
Sir, sir, hold on.
Yep.
All right?
Alderman Hanauer, go ahead.
Again, we have taken so much staff time on this.
I know.
Let's, you know, we're not going to pay more than what we're told the property's worth.
Then why did you pay the $130,000 for the two properties, uh, for one property, and paid another 80,000 or 90,000 or 100,000 for another property that wasn't even eligible? Answer that question!
I'm just tell, I'm just telling you that-
No, no, answer that question for me.
Mr. Arnold, if you could direct the, uh, questions or comments to me, please.
But, but my point is, let's-
Right.
Let's get this thing resolved.
Let's get a resolution, right.
Mr. Arnold's come up and used a ton of his time, too. Let's get this resolved.
I've used a ton of my money on the place. My, my niece has put in, spent over $10,000 of her own money.
And, uh, we need to get this resolved. That's, I mean, that's the point.
Alderman Fugenzey.
It sounds like a case for a civil court.
Are you going to be Judge Judy? Actually, what we're going to do, if you could get the-
The city really doesn't want to take this to court. I'm going to be honest with you.
Mr. Arnold, if you could get your estimates to Director Bottom?
Well-
When you, you had said Mr. Riddings is coming over.
Again, we can't give an estimate, okay? To give anything close to an accurate estimate on the foundation repair or replacement of the foundation, there should have been a retaining wall in place before any of the construction even started.
Well, that's, uh, debatable. So, uh, what we're trying to do is determine to repair it or to buy it. That's where we're trying to get to that point. And if it's repaired, if it's repaired-
Put the retaining wall-
Right. That would have to be part of it.
That'd have to be number one. Put the retaining wall.
Alderman Fugenzey.
None of us here are structural engineers. We can't decide the case here on the council. So I would suggest you go to civil court.
You know, if that's-
Well, actually, we're trying to resolve that before then, because, uh-
If that's the way I ask, the Alderman Mayor, you know-
And we'll get to the resolution.
Have independent engineer come in, away from Hanson, who has no interest in the city or the railroad project, and he can get his opinion.
Yeah, if you could, uh, we'd like to know the Union Pacific representative, that'd be helpful. And then, any estimates with regards to any of the repair work, and get those to Director Bottom, and hopefully we'll have a resolution or path forward by next council meeting, so we, uh, can cross that bridge finally.
You know, and I'm, and I'm going by what you told me there at the house, that you would fix the place up.
We'll have to make that determination as the-
Because you would demand it, just speak up.
We'll have to make that determination the best route, to fix it up or to purchase it, one or the other. That's why I asked about the property in back, and, uh, what that would-
And that's a rental property.
Right. So that has value.
And my sister and my niece is going to be losing money, you know?
Is that occupied now, though? Right?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you for being here. Alice Rainey?
Well-
I think she signed up.
My, my next step is go to State Capitol and have a press conference with the State Attorney. Get the, get the press involved. This is a federal project.
I feel like I'm in kindergarten.
If you could raise that up.
That's all right. I don't need it, okay?
Yeah.
I have three questions to ask, Mayor.
Number one?
Number one is, we would like to have our limbs picked up, okay? And I haven't been bothering him like I usually do, okay? I'm sorry. I'm falling down on my job, I guess. Second is, if we get the money from the weed product, and we're supposed to give about, what, 400 or 200, whatever the price may be, are you going to help us get through it and sign, help us to do the paperwork?
Yes, as far as the application supply for the funds, correct.
You are going to help. You're not going to give it off to Johnny Jones down the street. They don't know how to spell. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Third thing is, I, I'm trying to make all the points right away. Third thing is, uh, we, I found people over in Popular Place. Now, have you got anything that is on paper, or on bricks, or whatever the case may be, that you're going to do something with Popular Place?
We should have that by mid-April.
Mid-April.
Is that correct, uh, Alderman Williams? Mid-April?
Now, you know you got to handle me.
Well, you know, I'm, you know, I can.
I don't know about that.
By the end of April.
Yes.
Mid-April, by the end of April.
The next meeting is toward the end of this month, so-
Right.
And, and things are moving along.
Okay. I would like to have, uh, our next meeting for sure, okay?
Sure. And I, and I can't do anything about the name Livingston, just so you know.
Well, there, we're going to find that out. Mayor, why did they name it Livingston? Court, or property?
I'm not sure if that's finalized, so if you have other suggestions, you can, uh, give them to myself or Alderman Williams, and we'll-
Well, I plan on doing that, Mayor, okay?
It's really the homeowners, or the property owner that can, uh, ultimately-
You know, I have a big enough mouth to get it done, okay?
Yeah, just make the list.
I gave you a list, you know, one, two, three, already.
No, I mean the list of names.
Oh, list of names.
But to answer your first question, the branch pickup starts, uh, around the city May 1st.
May 1st?
Right.
Is that right? Or is it not going to be right? You know I haven't been bothering you now. Tell the truth.
Not too much.
Not too much.
Uh, the branch pickup is going to start May the 3rd, and we're actually going to go to a quarterly program, so, uh, so, and to standardize it, so that everybody will know. So, we'll still continue to start on the, uh, on the northeast, uh, northwest side of town. That, so that'll always be the first week every three, every three months. So we're going to go May, first week of May, first week of August, first week of November, and first week of February, just to make it standardized. So that also helps with our scheduling, and then, and then the residents will know as well.
Which ones-
And then we'll, 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 uh, go counterclockwise across the city. So the second week of those months will be the southwest side, and then the third, the third full week, uh, will be the southeast side, and then the fourth full week will be the, uh, the, the northeast side of town.
And we'll have the map on our city website, Springfield dot IL dot US, or, uh, Neighborhood News. So, if people aren't getting that, they can sign up for Neighborhood News and receive that every week.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
Also, I have another question to ask.
No, you said you only had three.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't count, okay? Uh, Mayor, I want to thank you for your wisdom when you talked to the council about the young lady that left, uh, Economic Development. Uh, I think what you said was very timely, very on the point. Uh, it is your decision. Uh, the whole thing is your decision, whether or not they get what they want, and how they get it, is you. Uh, I do believe that, uh, dealing with her on some projects that I asked her about when I applied for the first grant that they had, and she couldn't help me decide how to do it. People that don't understand how to fill out paperwork that is 20 pages long, I think you should simplify that part of the process for the simple fact that a lot of people are hard to do that, but they want to get their house fixed. They want to get it done. They want to know what it looks like, okay? And also, I have another problem with your, uh, the organs for, uh, pregnant people going, getting four days or four weeks off. I don't think the men need four weeks off to be with the wife. Only two would be equivalent, because by that time, the baby's already got you crazy, men crazy, okay? So you need to go to work. So will you put that in amendment, and have a good night, and God bless y'all?
Thank you. And with regards to any application process, the, uh, some questions we have to ask, because, uh, depends on where the funding source comes from. You have to make sure you, uh, cross the Ts, dot the Is, so to speak.
Make sure you talk to Dot the Is chief for your next project.
Alderman McCauley.
Mayor, I was going to ask, um, I've had people asking me, um, my understanding is if you were going to veto the parental leave ordinance, you had to have done that before today. So, is that going to get signed?
It's, uh, it's actually, we're looking at an amendment. Uh, it's not going to be signed or vetoed. But it does take effect, um, by this council meeting, counselor? Yeah. So it will take effect, but the, uh, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, so it is-
As far as an amendment, but it does take effect. It will go into effect, uh, today, or tomorrow, I guess it would be.
Okay, so if someone has a baby tomorrow, they get their leave?
Sure.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Yep. Any other new business or unfinished business? Anybody wishing to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.